Buenas en hafa de. Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this public hearing to order. It is now 1:05 PM, Thursday, November 16, 2023. In compliance with open government law, notices for today's hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post, provided via email to senators, stakeholders, local media, and posted in the Governor of Guam Public Notices website, on Wednesday, November 8, 2023, for the five-day notice, and Tuesday, November 14, for the 48-hour notice. I'd like to acknowledge my colleague that's here today, Senator Telotit Taitegui. Thank you for joining me today. And the purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on several items. So on Bill 165-37COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, co-sponsored by Senators Chris Barnett, Speaker Theresa M. Terlahi, Senator Duane T. De Suniculus, and Senator Joe Stenagastine. It's an act to add a new Article 10 to Chapter 51A, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the Guam Solid Waste Authority's Universal Garbage Collection Plan. The second item on the agenda is to receive testimony on Bill 171-37COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to amend Sections 51202E, 51207A, B, and C, all of Article 2, Chapter 51, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to increasing the fines for substantial littering violations. The second half of this public hearing will begin at 3:30, and it's to receive testimonies on the executive reappointment of Ms. Janalyn C. Damien to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Equalization, followed by hearing testimonies for Bill Number 169-37COR, sponsored by Speaker Theresa M. Terlahi, co-sponsored by Senators Sabina Flores Perez, Chris Barnett, Frank Blas Jr., Jesse A. Luhon, William A. Parkinson, Roy A. B. Canata, Telotit Taitegui. It's an act to amend Sections 14101, 14102, 14103 of Chapter 14, Title 18 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the publication of financial information by nonprofit organizations. The final item on the agenda is to hear testimony on Bill 174-37COR, sponsored by Senator Roy A. B. Canata, and co-sponsored by Senators Joe S. Stenagastine, Sabina Flores Perez, Speaker Theresa M. Terlahi, Senators Chris Barnett, Duane T. De Suniculus, Amanda L. Shelton, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senators William Parkinson and Thomas J. Fisher. It's an act to amend Section 3101M1 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to extending the validity of drivers' licenses issued to align with the maximum renewal period allowed under the Real ID Act. The rules of today's hearing are as follows. So those who testified will be in order from those who made reservations in advance, but keep in mind we will probably have the agencies provide their testimony. I ask that all written testimonies be submitted to my staff for copies to be circulated in advance. Those providing oral testimonies should recognize them, should be recognized by myself. And before speaking, please reiterate your name for record-keeping purposes, and if you are affiliated with an organization, please state that as well. Senators will be given opportunity to ask panel members any questions, and we ask that all questions and testimony be confined to the substance and nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. So to begin our agenda is to receive testimony on Bill Number 165-37COR, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, co-sponsored by Senators Chris Barnett, Speaker Theresa M. Terlahi, Senators Duane T. De Suniculus, and Joe S. Stenagastine. It's an act to add a new Article 10 to Chapter 51A of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the Guam Solid Waste Authority's Universal Garbage Collection Plan. So I'll begin with some opening remarks. So Bill 165-37 aims to ensure that every Guam resident's garbage is collected and properly disposed of. This legislation mirrors many jurisdictions across the nation. It will effectively reduce illegal dumping. It will implement a customer assistance program for eligible subscribers, and would lower rates per subscriber across the board on our island. It is a culmination of collaborative efforts between Guam Solid Waste Authority, my office, as well as the input of numerous government agencies and community members at large. In 2019, Guam, the Guam Legislature held a roundtable on illegal dumping. It was expressed by those in attendance that the island-wide collection plan would be key to curbing illegal dumping. Before Typhoon Maure, our island was desperately in need of an answer to this longstanding and increasingly adverse issue, and post-Maure, we have seen the problem exacerbated, as many on our island seem to be running out of places to dispose their trash, resulting in increased instances. Notably, and despite the increased hardship, we witnessed Guam Solid Waste, a step up in a big way in the wake of Typhoon Maure, as it collected three times the amount of refuse as they normally did, and we commend its employees and management for those efforts in our time of need. Recently, we've seen Guam Solid Waste ramp up their capacity and organization, and the timing is ideal for them to help more thoroughly address this community need. They've hired in-house mechanics, they've kept stock of key truck parts, and in fact, procured new ones, with an addition of seven both diesel-electric refuse trucks. So Guam Solid Waste is on the verge of gaining full autonomy and ending its ordot-dump post-closure receivership, which costs our ratepayers millions of dollars every year. One of the key elements in ending receivership is that Guam Solid Waste must sustain effective management of Lezon, and Lezon is our people's only landfill for the whole of the island for the next decades, and we must take responsibility for it. Every one of us creates garbage, and all that garbage eventually ends up in this landfill. So some of what this bill would do is require the garbage collection services for residential homes and complexes composed of four units or less. It would enable Guam Solid Waste and GWA to enter into MOAs to streamline customer subscription services and payment. It would also authorize penalties for those that fail to subscribe. It would enable Guam Solid Waste to adjust tipping fees if needed, and then we have the General Manager, who will talk more about that today. The bill is looking potentially to mitigate rate increases. We have members here that can speak to that. It does provide exemptions for those that are already on commercial hauling services, so it would not affect what's currently in place as far as commercial collections. Another key aspect, it authorizes Guam Solid Waste to establish a customer assistance program to provide needed financial assistance to eligible ratepayers, and Guam Solid Waste will establish these standards through the AAA process, which will include potential reduction or waiver of fees. This is important as it provides trash services to those of our people who cannot afford at the current rates. So this bill, in effect, spreads the responsibility of sustaining Guam's only landfill amongst the collective people of Guam. It also allows us as a collective people to take more responsibility for each other, so we look forward to hearing testimony on this bill. So prior to this public hearing, we did invite members in government, and in addition to sending out the public notices, so at this time, I'd like to invite all of them to come forward, so from Guam Solid Waste, Chairman, General Manager Slike, I'm sorry, Chairman Gale. We did Guam Water Works, we invited Guam Water Works Authority, so appreciate if the representative can come forward, Chris Bedasi, Guam E.P.A. I know we invited the Administrator Michelle Lastamosa, but today we have Nick Rupley and Glenn Suniculus, if you would like to come forward. We also invited PUC, so thank you for coming, Administrator Law Judge Fred Horeki, and Sedri, you may come as well. If there's anybody else who would like to come up, you're also invited. Fiscal note was received on September 22, and it looks at the potential impact of either revenues or economic impacts, and according to what was submitted to us, Guam Solid Waste is expected to increase the revenues by year two at the tune of 1.9 million, and then it increases in the third year at 3.9 million, and roughly it stabilizes around that point in the subsequent years. Okay, so I would like to go ahead and open the floor now to the first person on our list, if we can have General Manager Slike present his testimony. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Ervin Slike. I'm the General Manager for the Guam Solid Waste Authority, and I've held this position since October 16, 2021. I've been constructing, operating, permitting, planning, solid waste collection and disposal systems for the past 38 years. I've worked in Virginia, Maryland, Connecticut, Florida, and most recently in Winnipeg, Canada. I'm here today to support Bill Number 165-37 for universal collection with some additional Universal collection in the industry typically means curbside collection of green waste, food waste, household hazardous waste, and bulk items, along with household garbage. GSWA supports the collection of curbside residential refuse and bulk items, and GSWA also supports mandatory collection of solid waste. There are two main concepts in mandatory collection. The first is that every person generates refuse, and as such, they need a convenient, safe, and sanitary method available to them for proper collection and disposal. And the second concept is that since everyone produces waste, the collection and disposal costs should be equitably distributed amongst its generators. The benefits of mandatory collection are that the amount of household trash that ends up being illegally dumped is reduced. Another benefit is that fewer refuse trucks are necessary for a collection, and thus, fuel and greenhouse gas reduction goals can be reached. This is especially prevalent with subscription private haulers, or where self-haul is prevalent. A third benefit is that the costs are equitably distributed amongst generators, and monies collected are directed toward the agency that provides the collection and disposal The most challenging aspect of mandatory collection is the stigma of forcing a program onto the non-participant. The non-participant will claim basically three things. They will claim that they do not produce that much trash, they cannot afford the projected fees, or that this is simply a government overreach and must be resisted. For the first reason, GSWA has the regulatory and financial responsibility to safely maintain, monitor, and contain every pound of refuse that has been deposited at Lezon and will be deposited for the next 105 years. The obligation requires the same degree of protection from current GSWA customers as it does from non-customers. The inside of a lined landfill makes no distinction as to how much was produced and by whom. The second reason rests on the assertion that it's too much to pay. However, every bit of refuse produced was once an item that was wanted, purchased, consumed, used, and enjoyed. Now that it is unwanted, it seems the ownership and responsibility is also unwanted. The envisioned universal collection program will include programs to assist for the payment of fees. The last reason is one of idealism, and it sort of belies the reality of the situation. We are always skeptical of what our government is doing and why. However, the problem of solid waste is not a complicated one, especially for Guam. There is only one permitted disposal facility on the island to dispose of household refuse. If an individual does not want to share the financial burden of collecting and disposing of their particular amount of weekly refuse, then what's the alternative? Would this individual like to find a suitable off-island disposal facility and arrange for transportation? The idea of letting piggybacking continue seems to infringe on the rights of those who pay as equally as harsh as the rights of the non-payers under mandatory collection. GSWA strongly recommends the following specific amendments to Bill 165-37. Under 51A1004, the Customer Assistance Program, GSWA can only support a program that does not require GSWA ratepayers to support or involvement in setting eligibility requirements. There are Gov-Guam assistance programs for other utility expenses that should be modified to cover this utility expense. The financial impact statement provided shows that a $3 million deficit would be incurred without separate payment assistance program being created. This position that I just mentioned is caveated by the assumption that the continued expense of the ordot closure fund and receiver payments are unaltered. If Bill 187-37 is passed, GSWA would be able to use those savings to offer a reduced rate contemplated in this bill. We are confident that the current rate of $30 per month could be reduced to $28 per month for the existing and new customers, and the reduced rate of $16 per month could be offered to approximately 11,000 households who would qualify for this assistance. This fee structure would support cell construction, cell closures, fund an equipment replacement fund, and properly fund Lezon's post-closure fund. The rate structure is sufficient for the next three years and would be likely reevaluated in 2027. On the Annotated 51A100-301, GSWA recommends striking the square footage of the residential dwellings as not materially affecting the generation of collected refuse. The number of people in the dwelling usually drive the generation rate. GSWA recommends striking Part C home businesses. They do not appear by themselves to generate more refuse, and GSWA would not have any information available to make the determination of the existence of a home business. GSWA recovers excess waste through its additional bag tag charges, and GSWA recommends striking Section E. We do not collect from commercial or industrial properties, and this is not applicable. Lastly, GSWA on Section 5 would ask for additional time beyond the six months provided. Legal services would have to be procured to establish the anticipated rule changes, and GSWA feels that nine months may provide sufficient time. And that concludes my testimony.
Thank you so much, General Manager. We'll hear testimony before we open it for questions, so if you can, please stay. Next one on the list, we have, sorry, I'll just stick with Guam Solid Waste. Chairman Gale, did you have testimony separate?
Good afternoon, Senator Perez, Senator Taitegui, Senator Brown. My name is Andrew Gale. I'm the chairman of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors. I've been on the board since 2012 and have been the chairman for the last eight or nine years, I can't remember how long. I also support this bill. Just as a bit of history, one of the requirements from the Enabling Act of the Guam Solid Waste Authority was that post-receivership and management audit would have to be conducted. This management audit was conducted, and one of the recommendations from that management audit, which was presented to the PUC as well as members of the legislature and the governor's office, one of the recommendations was the implementation of this program of what we like to call it an island-wide collection program for all eligible subscribers of Guam Solid Waste Authority's service, which would be residential homes and residential apartment or multi-dwelling units of four residents or smaller, which are our current rules and regs. Again, the concept is the same, that this report recommended that. It was that most jurisdictions in the U.S. did this. Of the 50 or so comparable municipalities, I think 48 of them had some form of mandatory collection that this bill proposes. As you mentioned in your opening statement, that this is not an uncommon thing, in spreading the requirements of, you know, creating an operating a sanitary landfill and offering for the collection and disposal of municipal solid waste, and spread that among all of the citizens of your community. To that end, the Guam Solid Waste Board of Authorities and management have worked with many other government entities. We've worked with your office, Senator Perez's office, we've worked with, we've talked with members of the CCU and GWA about some of the logistics of this. We've worked with the governor's office in implementing this and helping us secure the financial wherewithal to be able to implement this program going forward. It will require us to, you know, buy more carts, distribute more carts, make sure that we have a sufficient amount of trucks. The current thinking is that the piggybacking that is happening, as Mr. Slike mentioned, would be reduced, in other words, the piggybacking that he's talking about is someone taking their trash and putting it in someone else's bin. So they're not paying for their share of the island-wide disposal, they're using somebody else's bin, either a commercial bin, say you take it to work, or take it to a public space, or you put it in your neighbor's trashcan, or your share. So the idea is we would try to dispel that piggybacking and spread the costs among the citizens of the entire community. And then it is also thought that this could help alleviate the problem of illegal dumping. I'm not saying eliminate, but definitely help remediate and reduce the issues of illegal dumping. If every single resident, eligible resident, had a bin for their use, that could be, that they could use for municipal solid waste. So again, the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors, speaking on behalf of them, are fully in support of this bill, and we appreciate you sponsoring it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chairman Gale. Now I'd like to recognize Guam E.P.A. for their testimony.
Hi, hafa de. Good afternoon, Senator Perez and members of the 37th Guam Legislature. My name is Nick Rupley Lee, filling in for Administrator Michelle Lastamosa, who is on annual leave. So we'd like to offer some testimony in support of Bill 165 this afternoon. We're pleased with the introduction of Bill 165, as it is a substantial step towards modernizing our island's solid waste management goals. Guam E.P.A. has long held the position that progress made towards curbing illegal dumping needs to be systemic. In fact, the island's updated Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan issued in March of this year recommends implementing island-wide mandatory residential collection that requires all residents to sign up and pay for curbside waste and recycling collection. So it appears that 165 will help us achieve that goal in that plan. Guam E.P.A. also believes that members of the community who are not currently subscribed to trash collection services resort to piggybacking, illegal dumping, or the use of any one of GSWA's residential transfer stations. Guam E.P.A.'s solid waste management program has issued 127 litter citations from fiscal year 2019 through FY '23, and at least nine since the start of this fiscal year. Program data reveals that some of these citations were issued for littering and dumping waste, which are eligible for disposal through the Guam Solid Waste Authority. An added benefit of increased subscribers include increasing our recycling rate as GSWA subscribers avail to curbside recyclable collections. Earlier this week, Guam E.P.A. reported a recycling rate of 38.2%, which represented an 8.99 percentage point increase over the previous rate of 29.21% reported in 2022, and we feel that we could further this rate with new subscribers through GSWA. As we are all too aware, illegal dumping and littering are unlawful acts of waste disposal. Some in the community engage in these practices simply choose to discard their unwanted items in places where they don't belong. These practices result in unsightly deposits of trash in our vegetative areas, along with village-back roads, our coastline, and atop of the island's sole source aquifer. These deposits lead to contaminating our land and our water, they lead to fires, vectors for pests to proliferate, and other physical hazards which pose harm to human health, human and environmental health. We can't place enough emphasis on how harmful and irresponsible this practice is. We can reasonably assert that the occurrences in littering and illegal dumping should decrease as the number of residents subscribed to waste collection services increases. In addition to the household garbage collection, these additional subscribers will have the ability to avail GSWA's curbside white goods and bulky waste disposal, which are items that we commonly see in illegal dumping investigations. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide testimony and support, and we're here to answer questions that you may have to the best of our ability.
Thank you so much. Nick Rupley from Guam E.P.A.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next one, we have Fred Horeki from PUC.
Thank you, Chairperson Perez, Senators Brown and Taitegui. My name is Fred Horeki. I'm the chief administrative law judge for the Guam Public Utilities Commission, and I'm presenting the testimony of Chairman Dr. Jeffrey Johnson, who is speaking on behalf of the Public Utilities Commission. First of all, the PUC wishes to thank the chairperson, Senator Perez, for introducing this bill, and commending the sponsors of the bill. It's an extremely important bill for solid waste. The PUC, over the last few years, has exercised its regulatory supervision over the PUC, and in that regard, the PUC has become aware of the difficult financial situation that solid waste has been in, and mostly its costs concern the Lezon landfill and the construction of new cells, and also the ordot closure costs. And if you look at their current budget, after all the set contract amounts are paid, there's very little left over, very little ability for them to spend discretionary funds. So the advantage of this bill, from a rate-making point of view, is that it will likely forestall the need of solid waste to file a rate case. And I can tell you, solid waste has been looking carefully, as has the PUC, at this possibility, and even possibility, and even preparing for it, the filing of a rate case. But fortunately, this bill, with the additional revenues that would result to solid waste from universal collection, that is broadening the customer base, would likely be sufficient to forestall any immediate need for the filing of a rate case. And I think the bill is extremely important because it will place solid waste on a much more secure financial footing. This requirement, as Chairman Gail pointed out, that is that all ratepayers have collection services, is really standard in the United States. And as he also mentioned, the PUC did a study in 2020 through its consultant, MSW, that basically said that in most jurisdictions in the U.S., there is a mandatory collection service where every resident pays for those fees. And in Guam, we know as of now, approximately half of all households, maybe 18,000, don't have the garbage collection service. The PUC report recommended that there be mandatory garbage collection service for Guam Solid Waste Authority. And the main reasons were, one, it stabilizes the rate base, provides an ongoing source of funds for the authority. It's fair, and I'll talk about this a little more on behalf of Dr. Johnson, it means that all ratepayers contribute to the system, which is the way it should be when you look at the benefits that result from solid waste collection. So the PUC does fully agree with the purpose statement of the new Article 10, that this bill would also help address the problems of piggybacking and illegal dumping. Dr. Johnson also wanted to point out that this bill is kind of a companion bill to Bill 18237, which talks about the Ordot fund, the Ordot landfill closure costs would be covered by the Ordot Dump Reserve Fund. And these bills go in tandem. And again, we thank the sponsor because it's a well-thought-out plan to address the major financial needs of the Solid Waste Authority. So these are both bills that the PUC feels all senators should support and approve, and that they will be very beneficial to the Solid Waste Authority. The question arises about the fairness of this, and General Manager Slick addressed that somewhat. From a rate-making perspective, it's ultimately fair and just to require all residents of Guam who benefit from a strong solid waste system and garbage collection to pay the cost. And everyone does benefit from it. First of all, the resulting cleanliness of the environment depends on the strength of the Solid Waste Authority, and all residents of Guam have an interest in a clean, safe environment for Guam. From the rate-making perspective, it's usually a rule that all regulatory costs should be fairly apportioned among customers, and have to... there has to be an avoidance of discrimination in rate relationships. Well, right now, you've got about half of the population paying for this service, but everyone on island benefiting from it. So from a rate perspective, it is ultimately fair to spread the costs equitably among the entire population. Just a couple of additional points. The PUC is in favor of a consumer assistance plan, but believes it has to be done properly. There was a model that the PUC worked on before with the telecom companies, which established a lifeline rate, and then the companies adopted rules and regs that set up the criteria, which were usually the eligible persons had to either be eligible for welfare assistance or housing assistance. It used some of the same principles from those other programs. So the PUC does support the idea, but it's only concern, again, and I think this was mentioned by former testimony, we have to make sure that the cost of the program does not fall unfairly on all the other ratepayers. And I believe Mr. Slick had indicated a plan that could make this a reality. Finally, in terms of any recommendations, only maybe a minor concern, but Section 51A1003 of the new Article 10. We felt it would be helpful just to have a little stronger language in there referencing that this is a mandatory requirement for providing the garbage collection services. And that section does talk about subscription to the services, but perhaps a strong message that everyone has to participate in this program. So in conclusion, the PUC supports this bill, 16537, feels it's greatly needed, and a really important bill, among the more important bills that this legislature may consider, particularly to the strength and ongoing vitality of the Guam Solid Waste Authority. So the PUC supports the bill and urges the legislature to support it and that it be enacted. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Attorney Horeki, for your presenting the testimony on behalf of the PUC. I'd like to also now recognize Chris Bedasi... I'm sorry, excuse me. I'd like to recognize Senator Joanne Brown and Senator Roy Canata for being here. Thank you. I'd like to then now recognize Chris Bedasi for his testimony on behalf of GWA.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, Senator Canata, Senator Brown, Senator Titegui. I'm here representing GWA General Manager Miguel Bernalio. He sends his apologies he couldn't be here this afternoon. I'm going to go ahead and just read most of our written testimony and then be available for questions afterward. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 165-37COR. Guam Water Works Authority supports the intent of the bill as written and offers the following testimony and recommendations, starting with proposed Sections 51A1003 subsections A and B. This section... These sections mandate GWA to capture customer data for all new and existing GWA customers and provide that to the Guam Solid Waste Authority to assist with the signing up of customers under their program. We raise the following concerns and comments to those two sections. Firstly, we're concerned about the liability to GWA if GWA customer data is provided to GSWA should a data breach occur within GWA's customer information system. Secondly, it wasn't clear whether GWA or GSWA would be responsible to determine which of GWA's existing customers have GWA service or service from a private hauler, so there would need to be some kind of a reconciliation with that data from our current customers. Third item, the language in these sections, it only applies to residential premises. However, there's fourplex and duplex units that are rental condos and apartment units. And in cases like that, for GWA, sometimes the lessee is responsible to pay for utilities. And so because of that, we require the lessee to provide authorization from the property owner to apply for water services. So it's not clear whether this mandate would require us to provide the lessee or the lessor information to GSWA. I believe the owner is responsible to pay for the service, and so in that case, it wouldn't be clear, you know, how we would handle that situation. And lastly, in that Section 1003B, it places the responsibility of the subscribed owner to pay for garbage collection services for their occupied residential buildings, again, the fourplex and the duplex. Maybe a more accurate and appropriate way to collect solid waste or to establish the solid waste services for landlords might be for GSWA to work with Department of Revenue and Tax Business License Unit and require property owners, landlords, to have their solid waste accounts set up visa that program. Might make it a little smoother if the requirement would be for the owners to subscribe. Next, proposed Section 51A1008. This section states that GSWA may enter into a MOA with GWA for purposes of implementing the mandates of this article, including payment receipt methods, deposit payments on behalf of GSWA. Back in 2021, in April, the Consolidated Commission of Utilities approved a resolution that authorized GWA and GPA to enter into an MOU with GSWA. Likewise, in that same month, the GSWA Board passed a resolution authorizing GSWA to enter into that MOA. And then back in October of 2021, the MOA was entered into. And what that MOA does is it allows GWA and GPA to collect and remit payments on behalf of GSWA. So for almost a couple of years, we've been collecting GSWA payments at all of our customer service centers and remitting those payments over to GSWA. In conclusion, although GWA has no issues with the proposed Sections 51A1003A and B, we believe that GSWA and GWA can work together to establish a practical process to achieve the objectives of Bill 165 without necessarily mandating the process itself through legislation. GWA and GSWA have already executed an MOA for some of the intergovernmental activities presented in Bill 165. Therefore, it would be unnecessary to include that first paragraph of Section 51A1008. And then GWA requests that the following section be added to Bill 165 that would add a new subsection to GWA's enabling legislation. And it reads, "GWA shall share customer information with the Guam Solid Waste Authority as necessary to be used for establishing solid waste collection services. GWA shall not be held liable for any damages or disputes resulting from the sharing of customer information." And then lastly, GSWA and GWA have already demonstrated the willingness and ability to collaborate for the benefit of utility ratepayers. As such, we request that Bill 165 not mandate the process or policy of how we collaborate, but rather leave it to the governing boards and the management of both organizations to determine the best way to achieve the objectives of the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the feedback from GWA. Okay, next, we have Sudhri Lansangan. You're recognized.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Good afternoon to all of you, Senator Brown, Senator Titegui, and Senator Canata. I do not support this bill, Senator Perez, because I have a lot of concerns. The intent of this bill, as you provided, in Section 1, is to generate revenue to Guam Solid Waste, because it is indicated that there are 18,000 residents that are not subscribed to a collection of trash. Well, that's 18,000 times, let's say $30 is $540,000 a month. That's a lot of money, if you would compute it like that. But my main concern is, is there a guarantee that those 18,000 subscribers, unsubscribers, I mean, would subscribe to trash collection? There's no guarantee, because in Section 51A1009, penalties for failure to subscribe will be determined by the Board of Directors. They'll be the one to provide the penalty. So we don't know how much penalty would they adopt, if it's $20, $50. Well, no matter what, those people would just pay for the penalty and then unsubscribe, you know, meaning the bill is useless, because there's no service. There's no service to them because they did not subscribe or enroll to the collection of a trash bin. So GSWA will end up with thousands of garbage trashcan empty, and then they're gonna lose money, because they're gonna... Once this bill is adapted, they will order a lot of trash bin, like 18,000 trash bin, and then 18,000 recycled trash bin. You see, there's no guarantee that this bill would be successful. That's what I meant, because people can afford the penalty and then get away with it. And then the second one is, the intent of this bill is, because you indicated that the Guam government is the sole financier of the Ordot dump cleanup, and the intention is to prevent contamination from Ordot landfill caused by the military usages prior to 1970. And right now, there's a... You also indicated that there is a lawsuit, just currently ongoing, and the government of Guam filed a lawsuit in 2017. Now, we need to know what's happening with that lawsuit. Can we collect money to subsidize GSWA so people can have pre-trash collection? And then, for a few years? And then the second also part is also the eligibility of people that would get free garbage collection. And it was also indicated by these two gentlemen on my left and my right, that because it could also backfire to GSWA if so many people are eligible for a pre-trash bin collection, and it's contrary to the main intent to generate revenue to solid waste. Those are my main concerns. And how to solve this? You said the other objective is to solve illegal dumping. It won't happen, you know, because Guam Solid Waste is not accepting so many trash, you know? They only accepted limited items. So where these people will throw some of the trash that Guam Solid Waste is not accepting, like for example, bicycle with wheels, you cannot throw that at the metal area where they pay for the metal, because they want you to take out the wheels, or if there's a wood connected to it, they want you to take it out, you know? It's also the cause of the government's concern to find a way to designate a place and help these people throw their trash in a designated place, like for example, on every village. In the mainland, there's three trash bins, for recycle, for the trash, and for the greenways. Here, we only have two. They always said it's a universal in the mainland, the standard, but there's no data how many states or county are doing it for the universal collection. It's just only words, but no backup, just to justify their support of the bill. You know, that's why the mayors here should be involved to designate a place where people can throw their green waste, which solid waste does not accept, and many more items that solid waste doesn't accept. Now, on the piggybacking, of course, you know, some residents are living by alone, by himself. How many trash he got? Like two trash bags, and then the trash bin is so big, they only occupy not even 1/8 of the trash bin. So they talk with their neighbors or their relatives to share. And I don't see any problem with the piggybacking as long as there's a consent between the two. And I don't see any problem with the piggybacking as long as there's a consent between the two residents. And then the illegal dumping, yes, the government has to step up and designate a place for people to throw their trash. And of course, there are still people that are throwing it, but what government has to do? You know, we need to have some mechanism, like putting camera on places that usually place for throwing trusses, you know, so they can be caught. And that's my concern. Just like, just like the so many junk cars, even you give all the budget to the mayor, it's still not enough, you know? Maybe some of the budget were being used for other purposes. That's why what we should do is give them money for every cars that they can tow, not give them a lump sum money. Because just like me, I've been, I've been online for three years, but up till now, they have not towed one of my car. I already registered three years ago. But then they receive their money and they say, they run out of money. That's why this bill would not solve the intent of the bill to generate more revenue because people, we can always get away with it and would not solve illegal dumping, Senator Perez. There's a lot of things to do instead of passing this bill. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lansangan, for your testimony. Is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony that hasn't already? Okay, so we now move on to our questions. So I guess this question is for, I mean, GM Sykes. You had mentioned that if everybody were to get on universal collections, there could be a reduction in the rates. Is that correct? And can you just repeat that information if you don't mind?
Sure. If you recall, my previous testimony on the Ordot settlement fund, that currently we're putting about $3 million every year, and that represented about a $13 for our existing 21,000 customers savings if we could relieve that burden and fund the trust fund to its full amount and end the receivership. So that $13 that I spoke about, if you increase the customer base by, we think, between 18 to 20,000, still fully fund the closure fund, the cell construction, equipment replacement, the things that I talked about. We, even with the increased customer base, we were online for a $5 increase. We presented to the PUC, asking for a $5 to fully fund those programs I just mentioned. With the increased customer base, we're able to still do that and offer a $2 reduction for what we think is about 9,000 additional full paying customers. And the 11,000 that we would offer the reduced rate for is an estimate of the current SNAP recipients, people that are eligible for SNAP. So that's how we arrived at that. We would be able to offer a $16 per month fee for that. So wouldn't, we're not contemplating free, entirely free, but there's a reduced rate for that.
Okay. Yeah, and so just, I know there was a mention about the settlement. Right now, there's a partial settlement, 48.9 million, but 25% of here is going to be used to pay litigation costs. So bring it down substantially. And so this is a one-time payout.
Right.
So we can't rely on that for continual free service?
No. What we advocated that be used for is to fully fund the required retro trust fund for Ordot's post-closure. That requirement will come due August of 2026. So if it's not fully funded to, right now, the amount is about 32 million. If it's not funded to the 32 million by 2026, then GSWA has to make a balloon payment. And so that's what I spoke about earlier. With our existing 21,000 customers, we'd have to look at raising rates right now to $70 per household per month.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's another thing that's looming at this point.
Right.
Yeah, the potential increase. So, yeah, we definitely cannot provide free services because the overhead of managing the landfills, closing of Ordot, making sure the post-closure is done properly. And that's what I think got us into the problem in the first place, right? We weren't financially stable to really manage these landfills safely for the, you know, for the health of the environment and our people. Okay, so a question for Guam. First of all, I'd like to recognize Senator Barnett. Thank you for joining us today. So Guam EPA, you'd mentioned the Integrated Solid Waste Plan. And so basically, that one of the recommendations is to have universal coverage, is that correct?
Thank you for Senator, Senator for the question. Yes, that's correct. I do have Glenn Snickless with me. He's Guam EPA's Program Manager for the Solid Waste Management Program. If I have anything specific about that plan, he's worked with the contractor to help develop that. So if there's anything additional, we can provide some responses today.
Yeah, great. So Glenn, hi. Thank you for joining us today. If you can talk more about that plan and what does that mean for Guam and managing our solid waste and, yeah, the importance of universal collections?
I think this is Glenn Snick's Guam EPA Solid Waste Management Program. The benefit of island-wide trash services would be to reduce illegal dumping. It's not going to, it's not going to completely stop illegal dumping. It's still going to be out there, but I believe that it's going to be lessened dramatically. It's going to increase the recycling revolving measurement data that we're tracking currently. Nick had mentioned, you know, the recycling rate. It's increasing past COVID. It started going back up again. But I think that if trash services for the residential customers are made available, it's just easier, it's convenient. You just take your trash, you put it in your bin, it's right in, you know, you take it out to the side of the road. You have two bulky pickups up to five bulky items a year. It includes white goods, couches, mattresses, stuff that we would normally see in illegal dump sites. So this is stuff that they're already paying. So it just makes sense that they're going to avail to the program. I can see where, you know, if they have a party and then, you know, they generate more than the trash service can accommodate, then they can take it to the transfer stations that are available in Harman, Malolo, and Aggett, you know? So if we do our part, the trash services in itself could be reduced dramatically. And that's one way of addressing illegal dumping and recycling and meeting our, you know, Guam Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan and our Guam Zero Waste Master Plan objectives.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe just a general question for, you know, Guam Solid Waste and Guam EPA. So there's another initiative, Zero Waste, right? So how can we integrate Zero Waste into universal collections? Is there a way to adjust the rates so that people that are moving towards less and less waste? I mean, I think that's kind of embodied in a lifeline rate, if that's, is that correct? So I mean, do we need to have a lifeline rate in addition to a customer assistance program? I guess if anybody wants to chime in on that.
I'll take the first stab at that question. I think the customer assistance program and the lifeline program, they're one of, they're the same, right? Where whether it's the level of subsidy is what we're talking about is really, it's really how you label it. Our, Mr. Sykes presented a possible methodology for subsidizing rates if a certain revenue stream were made available because of certain other obligations were fulfilled that the Guam Solid Waste Authority currently has to do. Regarding Zero Waste, I think Zero Waste is a journey. Now, again, I'm speaking on behalf of myself now. I think Zero Waste is a journey, right? And any journey is going to have to start with the first steps. And so I'm a big advocate of do it, try it, fix it, which means we need to do something. We, Guam, Guam found itself in this situation because we weren't doing something about the Ordot landfill, the Ordot dump at the time. And so it was forced to do something about it. And so the enabling legislation, this original bill as conceived, was a continuations of that. It was like, it foresaw that we would have to come out of receivership somehow. So that was the next step, is like, how are we going to come out? How are we going to maintain the integrated municipal solid waste system properly and to write regulations? Now, the next step of that is making sure that everybody participates in such a program. And right now, we're just talking about, that's why we're trying to make the distinction between a universal collection program and an island-wide collection program. Because, you know, as Mr. Lansangan mentioned, this doesn't cover green waste as yet. We don't have the facilities, but we need to get the basics. We need to do the blocking and tackling and establish that baseline before we can expand our programs. And expanding into Zero Waste, now you're talking about more like collecting food waste and diverting that from your landfill, which makes up a large section. Those are possibles in other municipalities, but we, again, it's something that we have to get our basics down, establish that, those basic levels of your municipal solid waste system that is collecting from all citizens of the community and equitably shared. Establish whatever lifeline or customer assistance program you want and get that working, make sure that is working solidly, and then look at it, how can we expand that into Zero Waste? That's the way I kind of see it. We have to, we have to do incremental steps to get to that particular point.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to respond to that? Yes, Sudhri.
Thank you, Senator Perez. One of the factors that can help GSWA with more funding is the American Rescue Act funds because the purpose for that is not only to repair, but also to clean up the whole island. So maybe you can coordinate with our governor to discuss that issue if they need more funding instead of, you know, how many millions they can set aside for the agency in order to, not to impose to our, to the people of Guam, the universal collection garbage because I don't think it would, you know, serve your intention and purpose because there's so many loophole. They can get away and it would not also solve the illegal dumping. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That reminds me, we did receive a testimony from Mayor's Council. They basically are writing in support and they are working on getting a resolution. But they did mention, when I met with them, they wanted to see green waste being picked up. And I think that's one of the things they would like to see implemented, in addition to a tiered rate for senior citizens and the indigent. So we'll definitely provide this for you to consider. Okay, I think that's my questions for now. I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues. Senator Taitage, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to my colleagues, and most especially, good afternoon to everyone who's here. Appreciate your time, taking the time out to let us know your thoughts on this. Of course, it's, this is big, you know? A lot of people are concerned about it. And I'm hearing from constituents, many of them who are afraid of this, that they have to pay for something that they really don't use that much. Many of them just load it in their truck and go to the sites that are available and pay only $7, you know, a month, you know, to have to deal with this. So, you know, you're getting on one hand all these agencies here who want this to happen, and you have a huge amount of constituents who don't. And we're here to serve the people, but we also need to educate them on what the reality is if we don't do anything at this point. And that's the biggest fear I have. You mentioned earlier, GM Sykes, that if we don't do this, if this bill doesn't pass and we stay status quo, we're looking at an increase to about $70, did you say that? And is that, when do you anticipate that increase to happen?
What I was saying is that, so for the Ordot settlement and this island-wide are kind of cajoined, so to speak. So earlier, when there wasn't any indication that there would be an Ordot settlement, and we just looked at status quo and we didn't have to worry about a balloon payment, just to maintain proper operation of GSW, we're looking at a $5 per month increase for our existing customers.
Starting when?
As soon as the PUC would adopt it. So we were looking at January of 2024.
Okay, so just in a month or a couple of months to increase $5. So right now, it's currently $30 a month, correct? So we're looking at a $35, I mean, by January, right?
Right, right. But if I may, so new information came, but when, about a year ago is when we presented it to the PUC for the $5 rate increase, that we were required to pay inflation adjustments to the 7.1 million that's currently in the Ordot fund each year until the payment plan ended in August of 2026. So we pay a $1 million for the adjustment. We're still required to pay $2 million into the, to the fund each year. And the receivers fees this year are $650,000. So when you take that amount of money projected over the next three years, and you needed to make the balloon payment in 2026, that's when the $70 per month would be required per household. We need to start that now so we could build the fund up to pay for that.
And that's it for a status quo, right?
For a status quo, right.
But if this bill should pass and we find a way that we can assist those who are, you know, like on the SNAP program like you mentioned, what are we looking at then?
Then we're looking at a $2 for regular customers decrease, so we go to $28 per month. And for those on assistance, we wouldn't be able to offer free collection, but we would offer $16 per month.
Can any of this funding be used more like a, you know, not just on SNAP? Because SNAP is, it's not really, not everybody in SNAP, you know, makes a certain amount. It's almost like a sliding scale, if you think about it, right? Has there been any options to provide some kind of sliding scale of even those people who are in SNAP?
Well, if I may, ALJ Hareki mentioned something earlier. What we had envisioned in terms of creating a lifeline program, community assistance program, customer assistance program, was using some criteria that were established outside of GSWA. We didn't, GSWA didn't want to be the decider of who was eligible for certain assistance programs. We wanted to adopt an assistance, any other assistance program. For instance, if you're, and we just use SNAP as an example. If you're eligible for SNAP, if you're eligible for school lunch programs, if you're eligible for Pell Grants, that way some other agency is making the determination of the need, and then we wouldn't, and we wouldn't be maintaining that. This is, this is what happens in the telecom industry as well. For the telecom industry, there's a program called the Affordable Connectivity Program, which is a federal government subsidy for your internet service. You can get up to $30 a month. The telephone companies don't decide who's on that program. The federal government said if you're, if you're on any of these assistance programs for whatever level, then you qualify. And that's how we qualify the eligibility for that customer assistance program. That's what we had envisioned in going forward. Again, once this is passed, we would still have to promulgate all the rules and regulations through the AAA process, as Senator Perez mentioned. So all of those would be flushed out, you know, in a public hearing, in public notice, et cetera.
Okay, so it sounds like, you know, if it's not PUC to come up with some type of scale, you know, or then maybe Public Health, who deal with many of the SNAP programs, can actually be a part of this makeup of this type of sliding scale. Any questions, Fred?
Yes, no, that's correct. That's correct. And that's exactly what GTA did.
And that's exactly what GTA did. And of course, that lifeline program was, came before the PUC. Any of these programs actually have to be approved ultimately by the PUC because with GSWA, of course, under the law, the PUC must approve any tipping, either residential or commercial fees. So normally with the telecom companies, they'd come before the PUC with their rules and regs and they all pretty much adopted, they didn't themselves determine what the eligibility was, but they adopted other guidelines like SNAP, low-income housing, a few others. So I anticipate that would be the case here too.
Thank you so much for that.
If I could add one more thing as well? ALJ Hareki is absolutely correct. Any type of rate or customer assistance program, anything that Mr. Slike mentioned, would still have to go through the PUC. We would have to justify it based on our current and future costs and we would have to prove that we could, it would be viable financially for that. So today, he's giving estimates based on our current thinking of where our financial situation would be should these pass. So we are hopeful that we would be able to reduce rates across the board. We're hopeful that we would be able to introduce a customer assistance program that would give some level of subsidy. But those would all have to be finalized as these things come on and then presented and approved at the PUC.
Thank you. And it's not far away, you know, looking at what some of these residents do and spend only $7.50 a month to dump trash, that we can put those on a sliding scale. I mean, it's not far away from $16, you know, and I'm not sure the whole $18,000 is going to, you know, avail themselves of that. But anyway, Mr. Siniklis from EPA, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that a lot of these federal programs for low-income families, there's a stipend for trash service, but they don't force it. It's up to the recipient or their clients to basically obtain that service. But there's already stipends available for that. I just wanted to make note that Section 1005 under exemptions, if, you know, if a person, a person can basically petition from GSWA an exemption if they meet certain requirements and if they're, I guess it's also to, you know, whether or not their premises would also need trash service. So like myself, I actually take my trash to the transfer station. I pay $7.50. I'm a responsible person. I have my receipts, maybe 80% of my receipts. And there's going to be a lot of people out there who are responsible, who would avail to this program, whereas a lot of people, it doesn't matter how many laws you pass, they just don't care. And the ones who do care, they're going to pay for it. But I'm willing to pay the $30 a month, you know, for the bigger picture, right? For our environment.
For the greater good. I think for the greater good of our island in every aspect of the world, everything from, you know, environmental concerns, you know, infrastructure challenges. I mean, these things are, will always be an issue and if we can do something about it to alleviate, you know, I mean, the better. I mean, we're finding now, even with you, you know, Mrs. Siniklis, that we're, that we're no longer being able to send our trash off-island like we used to as much, some of it. We used to be able to. Now countries are stopping and saying, no, you deal with your own trash, you know, it's up to you. And that's going to get to a point pretty soon because our landmass is very small. So I don't know how many more cells we can put up. And with typhoons coming in, I'm pretty sure Typhoon Marwah, you know, sped up that process on filling up our landfill. And every time we have a typhoon, you have to think about that issue too. And it's not going to stop, so.
We just had the update on the filling schedule that the typhoon impacted. And we lost probably about six or eight months. So it's not as bad as what we anticipated. And it's predominantly because the contractor was able to grind up the furniture and some other items and the yard and the green waste was kept out. So we did lose some time, but not that much.
Oh, okay. Yeah. It looks like we have some technical difficulty, Madam Chair, so I think I'll pause at this point. Okay, we're back in? Are we good?
This is Glenn from Guam EPA.
Oh, yeah, we're good. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make another comment, that a lot of the complaints that we're getting out there are people accumulating a lot of litter and solid waste on their properties. And I'll say 80, 90% of those people, they're low to no income families. So we try to work with them. We'll give them a warning, we'll work with them on trying to, you know, advise them on where to take free disposal options for the recyclables. We refer them to the mayor's office, who would help them as well. But I like the thing that we're protecting them from themselves, really, because there's no, there's just no options for them that they can clearly see that would benefit their situation. They'll continue to spend, food stamps, we'll continue to buy a whole bunch of food and generate more solid waste. And I think that the program would be definitely needed for a lot of those low to no income families.
Thank you, Mr. Siniklis. Saipan has the.
Could I just, to add on to what Mr. Siniklis said? First of all, Mr. Budasi from GWA had a really good recommendation. As I was listening to his testimony, I was discussing with Mr. Slike, there were some really good ideas that he had recommendations. And one of them that he mentioned, which I'm not sure you picked up on, was if you ask the, you'd force the landlord, the landlord to be the subscriber of the trash service as opposed to the tenant. If the landlord is a subscriber, then they would have to factor that into their price and they wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to worry about switching landlord or, you know, resigning up for the new tenant. Most municipalities do it that way, whereas the property owner is the one who's responsible for the, paying for the municipal solid waste. And so if there are situations where somebody is renting on a piece of property, the renter would not be responsible. It would, in other words, GSWA would bill the owner of the property, the owner of the landlord of the property, and then that landlord would be responsible for paying that.
That sounds good, but sometimes on the opposite end is that it, you know, tenants run away and don't pay their bills or their rent and leave it up to the landlord to cover those costs and he has to go out there or he or she has to go out there and sue them, which will most likely never get their money back. So that's why a lot of times landlords require tenants to fill out the application, to put their name on the power and the water, because then ultimately they're liable and it's not the landlord, because many of them run away and don't pay for it, you know?
But the benefit to the society at large is the municipal solid waste is being collected and it's not being accumulated.
Yeah, but if we are trying to tag this along with, you know, power and water, what they do, I know it probably makes it a little bit easier to, well, some people say if you do, if they have water, then they should have trash pickup. If they have power, they should have trash picker. I always think water is more essential, you know? If they have water, that they have to have trash pickup.
Which is the same thinking we have. This is why we would get the billing and name information from Guam Water Works Authority.
By the way, Mr. Siniklis from EPA, what does Saipan do? Does Saipan have free trash pickup or what's their status, their jurisdiction? How do they handle their trash? Saipan?
I think they're headed in that direction. Right now, it's not a requirement for everybody to have trash service. They do have transfer stations made available to their residents as well. So very similar to Guam.
The other question I had, Mr. Slikes, is on your testimony. You mentioned annotated 51A301. And as I go to the Guam code annotated to look at that section to understand why recommend striking out B, the square footage of residential dwelling does not materially affect the determination of the curbside collection solid. And then when I read Section B, it says, "Commercial and residential tipping fees, all commercial and residential tipping fees charged by the authority shall be subject to the review and approval of the public utilities commissioned." It's totally different from square footage. Are you sure you're hitting the Guam, the code annotated? It's, you have placed here 51A301, solid waste operational funds, that's what that title is. But when going to B has nothing to do with square footage?
Well, it's.
Is that the correct location? I don't know, maybe it was just under a different citation?
It says, "Single-family residence units in excess of 6,000 square feet." What I was trying to say is the size of the house.
If you can, yeah.
He's reading from the bill that's within Section 51A1006.
Okay, right here you have on your testimony was like the annotated 51A301, you see that?
Yeah, so he pulled that right from page seven of the bill, which is under Section 51A1006.
Okay, because you have us saying you want us to strike out the Guam code B in 51A301, which has nothing to do with number of people in a dwelling, drive units.
Right, I think it's referring to, if you look at 51A1006.
Okay, not, not.
No, but 51A1006 mentions 51A3001, which may be causing the confusion here.
Right.
Okay, it might be a, just a, you know, numbers are not correct here, but anyways, I'll show you what I'm talking about, just to make sure that we're striking the right area that you're asking us to do and not what's in the Guam code annotated at 51A301. So recycling right now program is still ongoing. You're able to still have that?
That's correct.
Okay, that's good to hear. I guess we really need that. And, okay, you've answered that question based on, well, I appreciate again your time. I do, I am concerned. All agencies here are in support of this measure, which is a good thing here. You're seeing the bigger picture, but most especially, you're seeing the future and what it's going to bring us if we don't act now on something. My concern is educating the public, your agencies, telling them why it's important that we do this and what's going to happen if we don't and who's going to be responsible for this, most especially our environment and how it's going to affect. So education is very, very important, gentlemen, because of the comments that I'm getting, the email and some of the testimonies, haven't had one constituent say they were in support of it right now. So let's, we got to work on the education part for our public. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadequie. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to all of you that are here. You know, this idea has been floating around for a long time. And of course, previously, when the Governor of Guam simply picked it up, the old DPW, there was no direct payment. So people put all kinds of containers outside in front of their house to have DPW come and collect their trash. And it obviously did not address the littering problem. We still had that problem then. We don't have as vigorous an effort today to even enforce littering laws. I don't even know on the last littering ticket. Maybe EPA can enlighten me. You guys issue littering tickets?
Hi, Senator. So in our testimony, we mentioned some brief statistics about our litter citation issuance. So between FY19 and FY23, we have issued 127 litter citations. That's just from Guam EPA's solid waste management program. I don't have the stats for the other agencies who do have the authority to issue litter citations and that includes.
There are a lot that do but don't.
Right.
Village of Merit have the ability, some do, most of them probably don't, right? It's not a very popular, popular thing to do. And part of it is, you know, Sarah Telemich, we all know it's awareness and education and it's amazing, we still have to educate people, you know, just on being responsible within themselves and within their community to not contribute. And you continue to see it, you continue to see the flagrant abuse. And some of the justification people say is, oh, because you have to pay for it now and if we eliminate the payment, then, you know, people won't, you know, they won't dump their trash illegally. And it hasn't worked in the past. For those people that already pay for their trash, this is a non-issue. I'm sure they'll continue to pay for their monthly bill. It's those that don't or those households that may consolidate their trash with other family members or maybe, you know, as a number of testimony here, they may, you know, bring it directly to the solid waste station for disposal at a cheaper price. So, you know, I look at this bill and I see the pluses is, I think we're going to have those out there, they're going to be very disgruntled about having to pay. Or of course, inevitably, as the cost, additional costs that you're talking about, we all know about that additional, not too far into the future, the increased costs that will be expected for ratepayers to address. But I did want to ask if this consolidation from GWA, you had mentioned that, you know, obviously GWA has some concern, releasing data, information of your customer base. I hope you guys will work that out. But will there be any additional administrative costs from G, that you'd want GSWA to pay to Waterworks for, I mean, if I can now go to, you know, GPA and pay my power, my water and my trash bill, it'd be very convenient for me. But I'm assuming there are administrative costs that are involved on your end in accepting those payments and processing and transferring to the solid waste authority? Is that something that you guys can work out? Is that something you need additional compensation for to offset your costs for your utility?
Yeah, there would be additional administrative costs and our expectation is that GSWA would pay for just the cost of whatever that is. And so we would, we would kind of do a study and figure out what we believe the cost of each transaction would be. And then similar to the MOU we have with them today for collecting payments, we would just tack on that additional administrative fee.
Do you collect payments now for GSW?
We do. So in October 2021, GPA and GWA entered into an MOU and started collecting payments for GSW.
You know, I did not know that. I'd always mail mine in and I'd walk across the street to a lolly and pay my power and water bill.
So at any GPA or GPWA customer service center?
I got to turn over my bill and see if it says, because normally it'll tell you where to pay, right? I got to look at a recent statement and see if it says GWA, because I have not been aware of that and I've been around in 2021. I didn't know that.
That's okay, Senator. Nobody reads their GSWA bill anyway, as well. A lot of paying customers for GSWA, the trash service, they don't read their, what they're entitled to.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about, because the payment for that particular bill, and if I'm late, it's always because of that, there was not a mechanism before to go ahead and pay directly with your power and your water bill. You had to pay through a certain bank. There was one, just, you know, a small handful of banks that you could pay it or you could, you know, you could mail it in or, you know, I don't know. I mean, could you even just get your credit card? Could I have it charged to my credit card every month? Would I have to think about it?
Yep.
As most of my other bills, I guess, you know?
Online payments are available.
The money's all electronic, it goes in and goes out and you're, hopefully there's something still left in the account.
Sure.
So, okay, so you already do that. With regards to the information, how would you have that addressed? Because is it between GWA and GPA? Who has the most, is there discrepancy in the numbers of, you know, how many are charged for power, how many charge for water?
Well, our understanding is that.
How many is your numbers in your customer base?
GWA customer base would be more reflective of the GSWA customer base. So there is a difference in how the power customers and the profiles of the power and water customers. So as far as the information, I mean, I think we need to meet with them and figure out what is the best way to do this and like we did with the receiving of the payments, you know, we would be able to work that out and figure out the most, best way to do that.
I think, of course, if this does pass, you're going to get initial resistance. I mean, the whole issue, even when people were required to use certain trash bins that your, you know, GSWA hand that out, you know, there was resistance to that. Even prior to that, when DPW came out and said, we need a certain requirement of trash containers, because people were putting all kinds of things out, there is a lot of kick, you know, a lot of kickback in that. People were not happy with it. But in due time, I'm assuming if this does pass and you get the support in the legislature to adopt it, there, it's just a question eventually, compliance and what is most lacking is enforcement. And I know it's challenging. Trust me, you know, the cigarette butts in the middle island are irritating, but what more, all the locations, I'm sure you find those key areas on Guam, you go clean it up and, you know, a week or two later, we're back where we were and I'm dumbfounded by it. I go, we live here and this is how we take care of our community and our island. But I think if there's responsible enforcement, I don't know what we need to do to address that, be it at EPA, while there's other, you know, legislation that passed over the years to give different entities the ability to issue these tickets. It's a small number, 100-something is minimal, miniscule compared to the number of violations that we see out there. So I don't know what more can be done to add on additional personnel, because, you know, even when I was there 30-plus years ago, enforcement was a collateral duty. It was not, you know, there's nobody identified that you are the litter enforcement officer, it's you're responsible for all these other things and, you know, along the way, if you see someone, you know, illegally dumping or throwing their trash out, you give them a litter ticket. So that's probably what needs to be looked at. Most people, once they see that there's enforcement, will comply. Most good citizens will comply. And maybe that's what we need. It's a little more presence of enforcement as. And maybe that's what we need, it's a little more presence of enforcement as a deterrent, so that it becomes a standard, because right now, we still see, all these years later, we still see so much flagrant abuse. People will go out of their way to go on that back road to dump the trash. But they will do it, right? They will do it. So, anyway, I appreciate, appreciate your input. When I go pay my power and water bill shortly, I will take my solid waste bill with me across the street and pay for it as well. Thank you, I appreciate the information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Senator Brown. Senator Canata?
Thank you Madam Chair, Sid, Jose, and to the entire panel for being present today. Certainly, great legislation intent, but we do have a lot of people that are apparently not following the law and littering everywhere, so we need to find something different and go down a different road instead of continuing down the path that we are right now. Status quo is not the answer. And that's the unfortunate truth. Again, certainly, we can put all the bills out there, legislation, and have as much authority out there, but when people are illegally dumping, I mean, we have a fund, but these people mentally, I don't know, their mentalness is just trash, I guess. So, you know, we, I personally have continuously given time to cleanups annually, the beach cleanup, but it makes no sense that Tingi Singh continues to be a dump site. And not only that, there's a lot of Chamorlan trust properties that belong to the government of Guam that are environmental catastrophes. So, I know EPA is here, but that's not, I'm not too sure if there's anything you guys can do on that? That's one of my questions. There's a lot of government lands, and more specifically Chamorlan trust properties. Do you guys have any authority towards investigating or citing individuals on those properties for environmental hazards?
We actually are working with Chamorlan trusts for some of their tenants. We do enforce on CLTC properties, and if it's a habitual tenant, it's brought up to their board along with a notice of violations. There's two things, there's a litter citation which is on public lands and easements, or on private property without the owner's consent, and then there's dumping on private property caused by the owners. So those types of violations, we issue a notice of violation, and those penalties are up to $1,000 per day, per violation, and oftentimes there's three violations associated with that. We're squeezing a sponge with no water when we're working with, you know, low to no and homeless individuals. So it's kind of difficult. We work with the mayor's office to try and get compliance. We try to provide assistance through volunteerism, and try, you know, to work with the mayor to get some volunteers out there to help them out. But ultimately, they'll be responsible, and we're also looking at CLTC properties. They're the owners of the properties, and they also have their inspectors going out and inspecting their properties, and they're finding the same problems. I would like to have, I would like to see Chamorlan trusts as a part of those apprehending agencies that can issue citations to enforce their tenants on their properties.
Thank you so much for that, because, you know, again, we can put whatever laws out there, and unfortunately, there's so much legislation out there that's just unenforced. But again, it's a mental strain for a lot of them, that you know it's wrong, but you keep still doing, you just keep doing it. So, thank you for that answer. Do you think citations need to be increased?
I think the next bill addresses the increase of the citations, and, you know, it really, it started high and it was brought down because it was not affordable, but in my personal opinion, you can have a high citation, and it'll be up to the individual to choose whether or not he wants to participate in paying for that violation. And, you know, really, it's a way to make them think twice about littering and illegally dumping. You know, it's a choice that they're going to make. I understand if it's something that is, you know, out of their control, and then getting penalized for something they didn't do, I get that. But, you know, you know, if they come in and they sit with us and they explain their case, then, you know, we will take that into consideration, but ultimately, they're still responsible for their waste. And unfortunately, they're getting smarter. A lot of these illegal dumpers, you know, they're removing information that we're looking for, and it's hard to try and cite these violators, and then ultimately, the mayors are called in to clean up the area because it's on the public property or public easement.
Yeah, it amazes me how they can go to Home Depot and buy a washing machine, but they cannot go dump it. It's very amazing. You can buy a, you can buy an oven over at ERC, and then they don't know where to dump it. You brought it there, you should take it back to wherever it needs to go.
Well, if they're a paying customer of the solid waste authority, then guess what? That's a part of the bulky items they can claim at the end of its use.
Yeah, but there's, you know, you guys were working hard, very tirelessly after the typhoon Mawar. So I know that you guys did a lot of cleanup, but now these people are just dumping again, back where you guys cleared up already, and it just, again, I don't know what we need to do with some of these people, but... Another issue is DPW was very much involved with a lot of the road cleanups. Is there any possibility for you guys to have more equipment into that, I guess, respect? Like, do you guys have any dump trucks that can assist instead of DPW-ing? DPW being the, I guess, picker-upper for all your trash? Because solid waste is your oversight, so DPW has always been picked on to. I'm the oversight chair for DPW, so I'm trying to figure out, the issue there is, DPW is not in charge of trash, but they're the ones picking up the trash at the Mawar recovery sites, right? Or they're being responsible for dumping and hauling, so...
GSWA is in charge of picking up residential trash from households. Roadside cleanup is designated for DPW. We have on occasion lended DPW roll-off containers, so they could easily do that. Our trucks are all rear loaders, so it would mean that, you know, we'd have to dispatch a crew, again, not to a household, but to a roadside, and manly load, you know, that material. We have a RFP out for us, excuse me, a small wheel loader, and one of the items is a claw bucket. Now, this bucket, if used correctly, would be able to pick up stuff along the roadside and put it into a rear-loading trash truck. And I've talked to Vince Ariola about a plan and funding so that we could assist, especially during typhoons, you know, picking up alongside the roadside. But currently, we just don't have the manpower or the people to do that.
Okay, yeah, I think that's what the current contractors were doing with the Army Corps, right? Is they had those side-load crane operators, they're like...
Grapples.
Yeah, grappler hooks, and then it's like their own play toy, right? So with that being said, do you, there's really a small issue I just experienced last week with your office. No one's answering the phone. How do we fix that? Is it a network issue? I have network issues. GTA still hasn't replaced my unit at my office. But I don't know if you have impediments with employment, or what are the issues that you guys aren't answering the phone? Has it called at, or like 8:22, and then one time at 12:40, and then the other time was at 3 o'clock and 3:20, and then 3:25 intervals?
So currently, we have a number of employees out sick. What we found after the typhoon was, you know, a number of our customer service agents were dealing with losing their own homes, so they weren't available. Secondly, just the crush of people calling in. The third was, we had promised the PUC that we would reduce and eliminate our administrative temporary workers, so we weren't able to hire, you know, somebody that we normally would to fill in for somebody that's sick or out. We're trying to fill permanent positions to accommodate that. So we did, we have acknowledged, and I've heard, it's hard to get a hold of us. I mean, some customers, get myself, my phone rolls over to whoever else cannot attend it, so I've answered the phone calls, but I understand it is an issue, and we're working through that.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, Madam Chair, that's all.
Thank you Senator Canata. Senator Barnett?
Thank you Madam Chair. Thank you to the panel for being here. Glenn and Nick, I just wanted to ask you guys to kind of expand on what Senator Canata was asking. Is it was clear in looking and driving around at these different typhoon Mawar, typhoon Mawar dump sites, that it kind of looks like our people took advantage of these dump sites and dumped all kinds of stuff that wasn't necessarily typhoon-related? Is that accurate?
That was an executive branch function to stand up for recovery efforts. So part of our messaging was, once it was safe to make an assessment of your dwelling, you go in to clean up, because we couldn't afford members of the community to become sick or ill because of any type of waste that's present because of the storm. In our observation of the waste coming in, we did have some questions as to whether the waste generated was really from the storm. I mean, it is obvious that you could stand to reason that it wasn't necessarily storm-related, but if it blew into your yard, that's tough for us to differentiate or make that determination. But the main focus of those TDMSs was to ensure that you cleaned up around your dwelling after a major storm event, especially when most places didn't have a power or water, yeah.
Yeah, I only ask not to get you guys in trouble or anything, but would you say that there is, maybe just give us a description of the amount of legal dumping that's currently happening? Because I kind of just thought people got rid of everything at these different dump sites. But Glenn, in your travels around the island, because I haven't been out to all the usual spots in a minute, so what are you seeing out there?
A lot of household waste, trash generated from the households. They're still throwing out white goods and unauthorized waste that would, you know, that was taken over to the transition sites. So, you know, Ramirez Street is an example, they cleaned it up like once, twice, and I don't know, they might go for a third round up there. But a lot of those areas that are historically problematic because of the demographics that's in that area continues to be problematic even after a cleanup.
And when you use the word demographics, you're using the word relative to the economic situation of the...
Yeah, low to no income, you know, living...
I thank you for the hard work that you and your division do Glenn, because, man, I know you, you're not just in the business that you do, but you're also out here at these dump sites, picking through garbage bags, looking for those identifiers, like a piece of mail with a name on it, or some other piece of trash that could tie that illegal dumping to, you know, whoever's dumping it. So I commend you for that, and I know that it's kind of dangerous, right? Because you have come across people who, and caught them in the act, and they've been upset about it.
It's that, and, you know, you have to deal with the environment. So there's a lot of other issues, mosquitoes, rodents, snakes, drug use, and needles and paraphernalia like that. So it's, yeah, it gets pretty, gets pretty crazy out there, but, you know, I'm not too scared of that. It's the people, that's, you know, that's the scary part. You know, when you have to go investigate a site, and there's cameras all around the place, and the place looks like a mess, and, you know, you find out, you know, a week later that there was a major drug bust. And we just so happened to be investigating a site, and that happened like maybe more than a handful of times. So we're working with Civil Defense Fusion Center when we find out situations like that, so that we don't impede on the investigation.
Yeah, this issue, I mean, I've been out to all the dump sites back when I was at KUM. I mean, I don't know how many times we've been out to these different dump sites together. I remember I, we had a segment cruising with the candidates or something, and I took a drive with Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenoria, and we talked about, you know, different ideas, different solutions, do we just put dumpsters out in the villages so that people can, you know, dump their trash in there? And I just had a funny thought, all these years later, here I am as a senator, co-sponsoring a bill that I believe could really be a great solution, but I just want to make sure that we can work together so that when we talk about the demographics, right? Low to no income, that they're able to avail of this, and also that are elderly as well. Because I got a couple of calls from Tanana and Pete, and so that's the part of this that I'm really interested in, is how do we work out those lifeline rates? And how do we also, and I don't know if penalize is the right word, but how do we consider those people who are responsible who go to the transfer station, right? Because, you know, our people are not the richest, and you do the simple math, you go to the transfer station twice, you know, a month, that's still a lot cheaper than signing up for the solid waste service. So I think for some people, we do have to consider that there are those people who might not be, you know, in the system, but who do give a damn about the environment and do avail of the transfer stations. And so I think that's how we, that's, for me, the biggest part of this puzzle that we have to figure out. But I definitely commend the author and I thank her for allowing me to co-sponsor this measure. It's, this is a big-picture solution. I think it's going to take a lot of work to hammer out all the different kinks, and I'm eager to get that work done. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Senator Barnett. Maybe a couple more questions in regards to, you know, GMS, like you were talking about an estimate of the amount for the customer assistance program? And you, what number was that, if you can reiterate?
What we used was the SNAP program, the households in the current SNAP program, which is 11,000.
And so at a rate of $16 an hour, is that correct?
$16 per month.
Per month, okay, and that equals about?
11,000 households.
Okay, let me just do the quick calculation there. It's about $2 million, okay, $2 million.
Yeah, so associated with that, Senator Perez, you know, one of the original, when we were thinking about this bill originally, we talked about a lifeline program or a customer assistance program. One of the things that we were thinking about is we didn't want to necessarily burden other taxpayers, other rate, excuse me, other ratepayers with that. So if there is an external source of funding that could cover, that would cover the lifeline rate, that was what our preference would be. What Mr. Slick mentioned there with the $16 rate is if we, if that other bill passed and it freed up an obligation that we're currently playing, paying into this fund, then we could allocate some monies from our existing revenues to do this partial subsidy of funds, of the bill, to qualifying residents. There's nothing that would prevent any additional source for funding, for funding that lifeline program to ensure that if, you know, if you wanted to, someone to avail of a 100% subsidized rate, if they qualified, that that could happen. It's just, what we've demonstrated is using alternative, is funding that is being used, GSW revenues that are being used someplace else, that could be alleviated if this were to go into place. So again, if there's some other funding source that the legislature decided that they wanted to use to increase that amount of subsidy, to provide free service to qualified households based on age, income, however you want to do it, there's nothing that would stop you from doing that.
Yeah, the other thing I was thinking of, the transfer stations, I was, when Larry Gass was the GM, I think he quoted an amount that it costs about $2 million a year to operate the transfer station. Is that an accurate amount?
It's probably a little more now. We've, I don't know those numbers off the top of my head, but I do know that for a customer that drops refuse off at the transfer station, it's more expensive than for us to send the truck down the road that it's already there, excuse me, and pick up that same amount of refuse. So the curbside collection with our trucks is the cheapest way for us to collect refuse, rather than, you know, paying a scale attendant, putting it into a box, taking the box and running it to a rubbish man, and then paying the fees that a rubbish man charges us.
So potentially, some of the costs, for instance, we close on the Dede Do transfer station, right? I mean, is it potentially as, you know... I mean, is it potentially as, you know, we put on, implement this program, a transfer station, if that could be closed, that cost of running that can go towards the subsidized rates?
The Deaddydoe transfer station's already closed.
Right, but there's other transfer stations. What I'm saying is that if there's additional transfer stations that were closed, the cost of operating that can be transferred over to subsidizing the collections.
That's one possibility. What I sort of imagine the transfer stations would handle more is more of the bulk items, the household furniture, white goods, et cetera. Right now, we only offer it to the paying customers, but if we go with this bill, everybody would be a paying customer, and then we could utilize the transfer stations more for bulk collections for those people that, you know, the illegal dumpers already put the white good in their truck and drive it someplace. We're just saying, drive it to our transfer station, right?
I think there's other novel ideas that are plans that you have for Guam Solid Waste, such as upon closing one of the cells, you know, putting up solar panels to produce energy. So, I mean, that could be potential revenue to go towards the subscription services for those that are eligible.
That's correct.
Yeah. And I think you also had other ideas about junk vehicles, too. So you have a solution for that. So that's something we look forward to. Okay, so I think if there are no further testimony on Bill 165, this bill has been duly heard, and we will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 p.m. Friday, November 17th. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off of the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or email to office@senatorparas.org. So we will move on to the next agenda item, Bill 171-37. So if there's anybody else that needs to come up to the front, it looks like everybody else is here currently. I'll go ahead and do an opening statement for this. So Bill 171, it's sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to amend Section 51202E, 51207A, B and C, all of Article 2, Chapter 51, Title 10, Guam Code annotated relative to increasing the fines for substantial littering. So Bill 171 aims to further curb instances of illegal dumping on our island. There has been a call from the community and our government that stricter laws concerning illegal dumping needs to be written into statute. Illegal dumping is not only an encumbrance on the beauty of our island, but also affects our livelihoods, especially like the tourist industry. It could leave hazards into our environment if left unchecked, and could also impact our lands, our waters, and our ecosystem in general. Bill 171 not only would, aims to increase fines, it would also implement them based on weight versus volume. And so what this bill defines as substantial littering is based on, and currently in law, it's based on volume. So substantial littering is equal to 32 gallons, so it's based on volume. What this bill would do, it will define substantial littering based on weight. And so there are several tiers to this. Let me see. Yeah, there's several tiers. So the lowest tier is 20 pounds, up to 20 pounds to 100 pounds, and that is a $1,000 fine. Above 100 pounds, you'll get to $5,000 fine. And then 10,000 pounds, I believe, is, sorry, I need to get the bill. Yeah. 100 pounds to 5,000 pounds is $5,000, and anything greater than 5,000 pounds is $10,000. There's also an option for those that are fined $1,000, that they can do community service instead of paying the fine. And so at this time, we did invite Guamipae as well as Guam Solid Waste to provide their testimony. And BBMR, they provided a fiscal note. It states, "Should the proposed legislation be enacted, the Bureau anticipates an increase in revenues to the Litter Control Revolving Fund due to proposed increases of current fines per littering violations. However, absent any data from Guamipae, the Bureau is unable to determine the estimate of revenue collection or approximate impact at this time." Okay, so we did receive testimony from the Mayor's Council in support of Bill 171. They state, "It represents an opportunity for our island to take an aggressive stance against those who will not place their waste where it belongs. Should this bill be signed into law, the authority given to multiple government of Guam officials to levy costly penalty fees for littering will be on par or better than most U.S. states. According to the National Conference of State Legislatures, most states may fine violators anywhere from $50 to $1,000. Subject violators to fines above $12,500. Charge violators with criminal misdemeanor with a possibility of imprisonment, or suspend violators' driver's licenses for one year." Sorry, wrong way. Apologies, that was your testimony. The Mayor's Council is in support of the bill, is in support of more stringent littering They say, "Mayors and vice-mayors, as peace officers, are authorized to issue citations only within their jurisdiction. The diligence of all other law enforcement agencies is paramount. Other forms of deterrent should be considered for public areas and government lands such as surveillance cameras. The Tomorrowland Trust Commission may want to revisit their regulatory oversight of properties that have become breeding grounds for all types of illegal waste." And so for the sake of our environment and future generations, this is from Jesse, Mayor Jesse Alec, "I support stricter fines for littering." And I believe the mayors are developing a resolution at this time. This time, I would like to recognize Guamipae. I did read off some of your testimony. I got confused in my papers here, but yeah, you're recognized.
Hi, thank you, Senator. It's not a problem. Again, my name is Nick Rupli Lee, filling in for our Administrator Michelle Lastimoso, who is on annual leave and sends her regrets for not being here this afternoon. Bill 171 represents an opportunity for the island to take an aggressive stance towards those who will not place their waste where it belongs. Well, as you mentioned earlier in part of that preview, we did our research with the National Conference of State Legislatures to compare the proposed fine increases and tiered schedule of fines to how it's done in the nation. And we found that most states would fine violators anywhere from $50 to $1,000, subject violators to fines above $12,500, charge violators with criminal misdemeanors with the possibility of imprisonment, or even suspend their driver's licenses for up to a year. We brought this up in the last bill testimony. Our solid waste management program has issued 127 litter citations between FY19 and FY23, and about nine since the start of this current FY. Some of these citations would meet the criteria for the substantial quantity under the proposed legislation. Data reveals that we've issued citations for waste like car batteries, construction and demolition debris, white grids and junk vehicles. So those items would definitely place fines in the appropriate tiers based on the proposed fines in the bill. We do recognize the merits of the bill, but we do have some concerns in enforcing the language, and we see that, you know, we're going to have some challenges, particularly with the area of some type of portable calibrated weight scale. That's something that we're currently researching, especially once we knew that the bill was The other issue is, the other apprehending agencies and departments who have the authority to issue these citations would probably have the same challenge in not possessing this scale. Some of the things that we talked about in the agency was perhaps entering into some type of MOU with GSWA, where we would use their scale to weigh the trash logistically, that might not be as feasible all the time, especially considering that we insist and enforce that the violator would be responsible for cleaning and removing that trash. So that's definitely something that we are keeping an eye on. We still continue our research with finding a more efficient way of weighing the trash if we're able to identify a violator to issue a citation for. So we do look forward to working with Senator Perez and her committee, because we still look at this bill as a means of deterrence. Again, it's a systemic process. We do need more eyes out there. We do have a limited number of inspectors, and that's something that you often hear about, our capacity internally, that's going to be a continuing challenge for us. But, you know, we'll find ways to get around those challenges. But it's going to be a little, particularly with this bill, it's going to be challenging, especially with that portable scale. And we could answer more questions about that after the other testimony. Thank you.
All right. This is Masi Nick for your testimony. General Manager Slike, you're recognized.
Hi, I'm Irvin Slike, the General Manager for Guam Solid Waste Authority. I'm here today to support Bill 171-31 for increasing fines for substantial littering violations with these further comments. GSWA supports any efforts that will alleviate the persistent and prevalent occurrence of illegal dumping. In the industry, the term littering is, generally refers to small amounts of refuse that are carried by a person in a public area that are not deposited in an approved container. Bill 171-37, as written, would place a weight definition on litter that is not commonly recognized. GSWA does support the concept of increasing the amount of fines based on the recurrence or the amount that must be handled during cleanup. GSWA would also like to recommend that a community advertise tip line for information which leads to an apprehension and conviction of an illegal dumper. This is a common tool used to deter this activity, and in addition, the anonymous tipper in some cases may also share the proceeds of the issued fine. Those are our recommendations, and those conclude my testimony.
All right. Thank you, General Manager Slike. Sedfri Lin Sangen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Senator Perez. My name is Sedfri Lin Sangen. I do not support this bill because the fines are too excessive. How are they going to pay these fines? They don't even have the means to go to the transfer station and pay their trashes. $1,000 for 20 pounds? $5,000 for 100 pounds and $10,000? Oh, come on. This is too much. In order to deter illegal dumping or litter, it should start with a government action, not always penalizing the people or increasing the fines. First of all, have you ever checked the data if you are successful on enforcing the fines in our current laws? And now we have to check the data first. How many were penalized on the fines before we even think of increasing it? How many? One, two, three? Because it's hard to justify that the person dumped those litter. People are also afraid to testify. And the issue here is we need to designate a place where people can throw the trash that solid waste does not accept, just like greenways and other things. It's not always about penalizing the people, and especially increasing the fines that the people throwing the trash have no means or no money to afford it. The more you're going to put them in trouble. And also, if they undergo the community service, of course, they cannot support their family. Well, the other things that we should do is police visibility. Maybe they have more power to justify that the person is the one that threw it, the litter. Police visibility and other things that you guys can think of. And that should be the main focus, not introducing fines. You need to think of ways how to deter illegal dumping and litter by minimizing the litter. Because even me, if I don't have money to pay, or I don't have money, I have money to pay, but the solid waste would not accept all my trash, because they're only accepting limited items. And then what shall I do? Maybe I'll just throw it also somewhere, you know, especially if I don't have enough money. Because some people charge too much on other items, and these people that's doing it cannot afford it. That's why I think there should be the discussion, should be the bills to be introduced, how we can deter illegal dumping or litter, not penalizing or increasing the fines. Thank you, Senator Perez.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lin Sangen, for your testimony. So I have a question for Guamipae. So, okay, thank you. Do you think that volume, using volume versus weight is the way to go as far as enforcing?
Hello, Glenn Sniff is Guamipae. During the transition site monitoring, we use cubic yards. We actually had pictorial of different sized trucks and what their volumes or their cubic yards consisted of, and we use that as a measure. And then it's easy to measure cubic yards with our, we have a measuring wheel. So basically, it's length times width times height divided by 27 will give you cubic yards. So that way of measurement is easier than to take it to a scale house to weigh it. There's going to be some items that you can call out right off the bat. 20 pounds, that's a battery. Tires, that's another, you know, 10, 15, 20 pounds. So those things you can call out. So during the, you know, the mayors collect, you know, white goods, tires, junk vehicles, bulky metallic waste. If you call out the items, you know, a TV is already, you know, close to, you know, over 20 pounds, less than 100 pounds, depending on the size. The batteries, again, you can call out. The white goods is definitely over 100 pounds. So if you call out the waste type that the mayors are collecting, that we're seeing out there, maybe minus the construction demolition debris, which would be a mix of concrete rubble, porcelain tile, wood, we use cubic yards on that. Because oftentimes, when we see the size, we can determine that it was just a regular pickup truck size, whether it be a two or three cubic yard load that was dumped by somebody who was renovating their home. And if it's anything larger than that, then we can say that, oh, you know, these guys use a dump truck, and that's like 14 to 16 cubic yards without even weighing. So those would be measurements that we can use in lieu... So those would be measurements that we can use in lieu of, of scale.
I think that's, and calibration wise, you don't really have to cali, well, you need a proper calibrated ruler or whatever, right?
Yeah, it's, it's the unit of measure we just need to address.
So I, you know, one of the concerns is when, when Glenn and his program are, are successful with an enforcement case, some, some people who have been issued an NOV or a litter citation do elect to fight this in court or take it up with the board. And so we just want to give ourselves the greatest chance to make that enforcement case stick. And if, if not having the means to, or if the scale is somehow challenged, then, you know, we, we have a weaker case and, you know, that, it's a lot of, a lot of hours that the, the program puts in, in addition to the other, the other casework that the, that they have to perform. So it's, it's something that if, if we could avoid, then, you know, we, we probably, probably be better for it, you know, with our enforcement rate.
So this bill was actually contemplated within the junk vehicle bill. It just, we removed that out of it. So potentially, when that bill comes up, junk vehicles, what the goal of that bill is to identify it as litter. And so the volume, I guess, maybe what we would like to, to work with you more is the scalability of the fine with the, the amount that's being dumped, volume based. So, General Manager Slike, so in your experience, is illegal dumping, or sorry, substantial littering, is it more based on volume in your experience?
I'll give an example of what I experienced in Connecticut. So they had, like, the definition I gave for littering was, again, small amounts of waste that's carried on your person, like a coffee cup, food wrapper, and you dump it in a city street or a public area, not in a container. And so that was, you know, 20 to 50 to maybe $100, depending on the city and jurisdiction. That same material, no matter the quantity, if it were off into a rural road or a dead end street, and they dumped, you know, a McDonald's container, the jurisdiction had the right to charge illegal dumping, which is like $1,000, regardless of the volume. And that illegal dumping went, wasn't based on volume. If it were higher amounts, it was also based on 1,000 plus whatever cost it took for somebody to come down and clean it up. And so they had trouble with illegal dumping for construction demolition debris. You know, somebody knocking down a house or cinder blocks, and they would drive off to a remote area and just dump a whole dump truck load. Those, if they found substantial amounts, those fines were $50,000 and the confiscation of the vehicle. And that's pretty common in New York, Connecticut, the, you know, the New England states because there's a substantial amount of money that's, you know, costs to clean that up, and they really wanted a deterrent. So in New York City, for example, the last recommendation, they have a tip line, and the, the fine is $2,000. And if somebody gives a successful tip, they get to share that. And SWANA has recognized that. And there's other programs similar where people that call in and report it and have proof are able to collect some of the fines.
Great. We'll definitely look to you for more consultation as we amend this bill. Yes, Glenn, you had a point.
So the citations that are issued to abandoned vehicles out there, you know, you look at the law, and it doesn't have abandoned vehicles or junk vehicles anywhere in the law. But the law does say this, "Litter shall mean discarded, used, or leftover solid wastes or solid materials, refuse, paper, containers, bulky metallic waste, packaging, or construction materials, or carcasses of dead animals." So when I issue my citation for an abandoned vehicle that's on a public easement or a public, public properties without the owner's consent, I cite refuse. EPA doesn't have a definition for refuse. I haven't found any laws that actually define what refuse is, which means that they use the universal definition of refuse. So under the Webster's Dictionary, they give examples of what refuse materials are, which includes garbage, rubbish, street refuse, dead animals, vehicles, junk vehicles, abandoned vehicles, industrial waste and demolition waste, everything that is already in there. So the, we're using the universal definition of refuse to include abandoned vehicles. And then under Article 2 of 10 GCH, Chapter 51, the Litter Control Act, they define junk vehicle, right, which is what we're trying to change here. But on, on the 10 GCH, Chapter 51, Article 2, it identifies what a abandoned vehicle is. So that's how I issue my citations for abandoned vehicles that are found on public easements, public properties, or on individual private properties without the owner's consent.
Thank you for that clarification. So, yeah, so that, that would definitely, this bill would affect, we increase the fines, it would affect the abandoned vehicles.
I would like to see, though, however, you know, based on what Irvin was saying, you know, he was talking about some of the urban areas. Well, just maybe looking at it with this point of view, a lot of the illegal dumping activities are happening on roads to nowhere, utility easements overlapping 1,000-foot wellhead protection zones. So maybe if illegal dumping is happening in areas like that, increase the penalty amounts because now you're messing with our drinking water source. If they're, if they're tossing trash and litter illegally dumping along the coastline and rivers and streams, then increase those penalty amounts because they impact the environment even more so because of the resources that we're trying to protect. Just kind of something to think about.
Thank you for your experience and expertise. Okay, I don't have further questions at this time, so I'll open up to my colleagues. Senator Tadequie, you're recognized, if you're ready. Okay, Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Well, I appreciate you outlining the, the issues and challenges you're dealing with regards to litter citations. You know, the raising of litter fines has been going on forever. And I think the basic issue we're looking at really is the resources for enforcement. I mean, we could put any amount, but if we don't have the ability to support the enforcement side of the House, we're pretty not, as we see now, we're not seeing much change. This has been visited many times. Probably every legislature I've been in back in the day was always addressing increasing the penalty amount. I don't know if a lot of people, and of course, we're looking for what recourse can we have, but I don't think a lot of people think about it when they committed a violation. They probably just do it because they're trying to get rid of something, or they're not thinking, or they don't care. Sad reality, some people just simply don't care, you know, to really even know what the consequence is if they actually get caught. And so I think while we may look at changing instead of, you know, weighing, because I think weighing this, the trash is going to be a challenge, maybe changing it back to the volume. But I don't think it matters what amount we put on it. We can continue to increase it. If we're not going to enforce it, we're not going to get much change. And this is a real behavioral thing. You know, it's, it's a lot of people really, let's get right down to the brass tacks. They don't have any respect for themselves, and they don't respect the community they live in. That's why this happens. And it hasn't gotten better. I mean, as much as there's so much cleanup and, you know, awareness out there, it hasn't changed the behavior. I mean, you have young people still. Go to a public school and, and other schools. You know, the kids themselves are not even conscious in their own school. I, I went into one school that I was there to visit, to talk to students, and I was really taken aback by the amount of trash that was in the campus. They may have just had break or whatever the case may be. And I brought one of the soda cans from outside, and I walked in the classroom. I got introduced, and I threw it on the floor. And I know they all looked at me like, what's wrong with this person? And I said, well, what's the difference? What's the difference throwing this soda can here in this classroom than throwing it outside in the hallway? What's the difference? Because I was really taken aback. I, gosh, when I went to school, you just didn't do things like that. So, I mean, it's a lot of behavior. I mean, a lot of young people are brought up to, to be very conscious and, you know, not, not throw trash and be responsible. But we got a lot of grown adults that really just haven't gotten that message. But I have to say, Madam Chair, I mean, I don't have a problem supporting this bill or increasing the fines, but I really genuinely do not think we are going to get any change in how we deal with illegal dumping or illegal littering out in our community until we address proper enforcement, because that is really what's lacking. I've found in my experience that when people know there's enforcement, most reasonable people comply. And I realized that when I was back at Guam PA, when they, we had limited, and you still have limited resources. You don't have much more staff than we did back in the early 1990s. But once people knew we were going to come after, and we were going to address enforcement, all of a sudden, they started to comply. So I just think maybe the real issue is looking at how do we get a little more resources to Guam PA so they actually can have the staff capacity to go out there and do the enforcement. You know, for us, in the end of the day, it's really not the amount. It's wanting to see that, you know, the litter problem is being addressed out there. So that may be another avenue to look at it. Like I said, I will support this bill, but I don't think ultimately that's going to deter irresponsible people from continuing to, to be irresponsible with regards to proper disposal of, of trash and other waste material. So thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for being here this afternoon to, to speak with us.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tadequie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As well, thank you for spending the time with us this afternoon. I know it's been long, but it's greatly appreciated. You know, if anyone knows about, you know, increasing fines, I did that the first time I became a Senator. In the 30th Guam Legislature, I increased the fines for, you know, like throwing cigarette butts, especially, and it wouldn't, the price went up during the dry season. Remember that? You know, increased it. My concern is, you know, any bill like this that's put forward, and I've seen it firsthand, that, you know, all the infrastructure you put together and, and the manpower, you know, that's needed to, to make this bill a sound bill, or any bill that had, for that matter, when it comes to increasing fines, you have to have those in place. You know, the manpower, the infrastructure, everything in place in order to make this really work. You know, it's, it's a great deterrent, you know, but then again, you know, we have to be able, as a community, to provide, you know, areas where people can actually, you know, take their trash. You know, where are the dumpsters, you know, that they can put it in instead of just, well, they don't see anything available or the options of, of throwing the trash only in certain stations, right? But there's not a lot of those stations that you go to, you know, once a month to dump your trash. But, you know, anything to deter, I'm, I'm in full support of it. But, you know, without the manpower and infrastructure, it's going to be very difficult to enforce. So, but again, again, I thank you so much. And I'm not saying at all to give up at all, because once we stop talking about it, once we stop trying to find solutions, then, then we failed. So let's continue to move forward and progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tadequie. Senator Canata.
Thank you guys again for being here. So one of my concerns is, you know, when individuals throw cigarette butts, I don't think that's 20 pounds. So how do we, is that, is that enforceable? What is that, what would be the fine on that?
I, you know, looking at the, that's a great question. I think because of the definition substantial quantity, it, it kind of augments what happens when you exceed 20 pounds. But anything below that would, would still defer to the current littering law, which is 200 bucks. And then if you're, if we're in a high fire danger rating, I, I believe it might double. Is that, yeah, might double.
Okay. So if an individual, for whatever reason, throws their prescription bottle inside their trash, right? What is the process that you guys go through for, I guess, citing them?
Is it for illegal dumping or littering?
Yes. So when we're cleaning up some debris over in a Stumble Gardens, we were clearing out the park, and we found like three bottles that belonged to the same individual. And, you know, we're very blessed that they left their prescription in there. But my problem is, I don't know what that, what happened after that. You know, the mayor took pictures of it, and I left it at that. But I just wanted to know if you guys have a process in place that would, I guess, you know, how does, how, what do you, what do you guys do from there? What is your process?
So oftentimes, we'll get referrals from the mayor's office, but the mayors can actually do a litter citation. They can issue litter citations as well. Under our 10 GCH, Chapter 51, Article 2, Litter Control Act, I believe they have their own citation program. And maybe that's where it's confused, where, oh, we can't issue a citation if they're not in our municipality or they're part of our constituents. But under our law, they can. So that was kind of confusing. So they'll call us up to issue a citation. We'll go down and take a look. It's basically personal identifiable information. And then based on the citation laws, we can issue the citation based on that evidence. It could be somebody who witnessed illegal dumping or littering or finding prima facie evidence containing the personal identifiable information of the individual who would now be responsible for the citation. And likewise, if somebody had witnessed illegal dumping and they saw the driver, the license plate, we issue the citation to the registered owner of the vehicle for that case.
Would you support seizure of the vehicle?
You know, I, I used to work for Fish and Wildlife, and I know that, and maybe they still do it. If the activity, if an illegal activity occurs, like, let's say, out in the water, and they take their fishing equipment, and they place it into their truck or their boat, and they're driving down Marine Corps Drive, and they get, you know, they get pulled over, they confiscate everything, you know? So I, I don't see too much of, you know, litter violations from a moving vehicle. It's more illegal dumping in isolated areas or an accumulation or overflowing trash bins on an easement that now the paying customer has to pay for the citation.
There was an incident that happened in NCS where the individual owned a company, a construction company, obviously doesn't speak the best of English. But regardless of that matter, the individual obviously had a truckload full of construction debris and was discarding it on the side of the road. I'm not too sure whatever happened to that issue, but the video was circulating on WhatsApp, and I was just curious as to, you know, the vehicle looked nice. So you guys could get a new vehicle if it was seized immediately, right? Maybe that's something that we can look into, that it's illegal activity to be littering, but along with the citations that would be, you know, on the...
I, I think that would be a good example with the, with the volume. If they're throwing like, you know, 500 pounds or 1,000 pounds of C and D, then, yeah, maybe confiscate their vehicle. But if somebody is driving down the road and, you know, they flick their cigarette butt, I don't, I don't think we could justify the confiscation of their vehicle.
Right, of course, a different scenario. But obviously, if we see the individual dumping a truckload of trash, then maybe we should seize the vehicle immediately.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, it, we could, I mean, that sounds like a great idea. And you can go a little bit further to make it a little bit more strict. Again, using the, you know, the example that I use, if they're illegally dumping along a water wellhead protection zone and sensitive areas that we need to protect, then, yeah, by all means, confiscate their vehicles.
Because once upon a time, my family owns property near the latter area, and we cleaned up the property in the pipeline, spent $8,000 of our personal funds to have dump trucks come there and the backhoe clear it up. But it's honestly an endless cycle unless someone's actually staying there. They will continue to dump. And the military also went there and proved their, their underground pipeline. And then, again, if no one stays there, these people just continue to unfortunately dump, even though it's illegal. They know it's illegal. They just keep dumping. So, yeah. Another possible option is to close the access point. Would you, would you, do you think that's a good idea? Like, if it's only for easement, like, you're going up to Channel 10, right? You're at Nimitz Admiral Housing. The access point for you to go into Channel 10 is closed off, right? But if you have an off, off-road vehicle, you can go around it. But the military locks up the entry point, and it's only accessible if called upon, right? And absolutely necessary.
I totally agree with controlling access. A lot of illegal dumping is happening to roads to nowhere, utility easements that lead to, you know, water wells. So, if they control the access for just the people who need to be in there, then that would be great, it just deters that, because we've cleaned up a number of pipeline areas, and, you know, after, and people volunteer because they want to do the right thing. But I'll tell you what they're kind of fed up with, is that after they clean up the place, a week later, it's just back to the same old illegal dumping activity. I remember one, I think it was a contractor with GPA, they had telephone poles that they needed to get rid of. So, you know, they said, hey, Glenn, what can we, how can we get rid of these cement poles, and what do you think we can do? And I said, well, you know what, donate it to the mayor's office, and we just did a pipeline cleanup, maybe they can use it to, you know, basic delineate the entrance of the site and control that site to prevent illegal dumping. But they couldn't use it for that because of liability purposes, they had to just crush the concrete poles and get, you know, rebar and concrete rubble out of it. But that would be a case where it could have been used to deter entrance to a site.
Okay. Thank you so much. That'll be all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Canata. Oh, one more.
Mr. Ruble.
Sorry, I just wanted to go back to the viral video that you mentioned earlier. Is this the Paksha Builders guy, spoke very little English, and then, okay, so we did, Glenn, I think you remember this, when we, the operator of the vehicle had permission to use that property because it was determined that the owner of the construction company is the same owner as the property, he was just instructed to drop off materials on-site, didn't have, didn't have a way to get in because it was blocked, couldn't properly explain to the person recording him that he had permission to be there. And so, Glenn and his program went through the process of vetting the claims that the driver made, because the video clearly indicated the logo of the company on the truck along with the license plate. So, in Glenn's program's investigation, that's everything that we've learned about that is, the guy had the, the person portrayed in the video had permission to be there, and in fact, was instructed by the company to go there and place some construction material there. So, that was something that we closed out a little while ago. I just wanted to make sure that you were clear that, you know, we did, we did address that.
And I believe he also ended up cleaning up that area just right outside the entrance.
That's great.
So, yeah, there's some, you know, there's, there's a lot of, it's kind of like the Wild West out there. You know, you have yards, construction yards in residential areas and in agricultural areas in the middle of nowhere, probably not even permitted. So, we're looking at the waste type, and it's obvious that it's not a material, so we're like, okay, you know, it can't have it here, you need to clean up these areas here along with this front entrance. And they were pretty quick about cleaning up the site. They did a really good job in cleaning it up, and we advise that they just do better housekeeping on their, on their yard.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry, Madam Chair.
No worries. Thank you, Senator Canata. Senator Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure talking trash this afternoon. I just wanted to ask if, because again, going back to the illegal dumping, I recall there's a lot of these little turnoffs in the Two Lovers Point area, and so I remember I had discovered a dump site, and it was, it was a big pile of, I want to say it was like packaging for probably like 30 different split unit aircon, you know, it was like boxes and the styrofoam, and so, I guess what I would ask is if, do you, do you think that we should have a different level of fine or penalty for businesses versus, you know, individuals and private citizens? Because I know that traditionally, when you guys issue these notices of violations, oftentimes you offset the monetary punishment or penalty with, I forget the term you guys use, but it's like, okay, if you don't want to pay $5,000 fine, can you, can you put a dumpster over at this beach cleanup that we're doing?
Supplemental environmental project.
Except, thank you, yes. So, yeah, I guess that's my question, is do we need to have one set of penalties for businesses who, I mean, not only should know better, but definitely in most cases have the means to properly dispose of waste?
I think that's a great idea to kind of hold businesses at a higher level when it comes to waste management. They're getting paid to construct, demolish, they actually get, have to get a disposal plan from Guam EPA that we have to approve, and then we inspect for occupancy to ensure that all the waste during the construction is cleared off the property and off the adjacent properties. And if waste from the construction project is on the adjacent properties during our inspection, we issue them a litter citation. So, yes, I totally agree that, you know, maybe they need to be held to a higher standard because they are a business, and oftentimes, they have a collection permit, and as a part of the collection permit, it authorizes them to transport waste on Guam's roadways from the point of generation to an EPA disposal site or recycling facility.
Thank you for that, Glenn. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Right, thank you for that suggestion. I think that's, that concludes the hearing for this, for Bill 171-37. Again, we will look, thank you for your testimony, and we definitely look forward to collaborating further and improving this bill, so that we ensure the enforcement is, capacity is not interrupted, and to look for ways to tailor it to the offender. So, I like the idea of the business, you know, they should have, they should follow their, their plan, and if they're not, then there maybe could be a different tier for that. Okay. So, there are no further testimony. Bill 171-37 has been duly heard. Thank you, everyone, for being here. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Friday, November 17, 2023. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabino Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building, or email to office@senatorparas.org. Thank you very much, you have a great day. And so, we are going to move on to the next item of the agenda, is to hear testimony on the executive reappointment of Ms. Janalin C. Demian to serve as a member on the Guam Board of Equalization for a term of four years from August 29, 2023 to August 20, it says 27, 2027. The Guam Board of Equalization serves as an important role for our island by overseeing the certification of roles, where the Secretary of the Board shall certify every year to the tax collector honor before October 31 of that year, and the Secretary of the Board shall deposit all records relating to the role of the assessor. No assessment shall be reduced unless either the person assessed or his agent files with the board a written application showing the facts claimed to warrant a reduction, or assessor recommends in writing that a reduction be made. So, the importance of this board is they have to certify the roles prior to property taxes being rolled out, and additionally, they serve as an appeals board for any unresolved issues with the Department of Revenue and Taxation. So, we did, we did send out invitations to the Director of Revenue and Taxation. So, the acting director did send us a written testimony in support of the nominee. And so, we have that on file. It states that, so Attorney Demian currently serves as a Secretary of the Board of Equalization, and has been instrumental in taking and submitting the meeting minutes. She's professional, has proven to be an asset in providing invaluable service to the board. Her reappointment is crucial to ensuring the quorum at meetings and for voting on issues. Recruitment for boards and commissions has been difficult. In light of this, I urge the committee to take swift favorable action for the reappointment in order to ensure smooth continued operation of the Board of Equalization. This is from Acting Director Marie Lozama. And so, now we'd like to open up testimony. We'll start with Attorney Okube, and then the nominee herself. So, good afternoon, and you're recognized, Attorney Okube.
Buenas en Hafa Day, Chairwoman Perez, and to Senators Canata Barrett and Senator Tadequie, and to the remaining Committee on the Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor, Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. I think many of you know me, Cynthia Okube. I'm commonly known by many of my colleagues and in those in the law as Okube and family, and I currently serve as Chairman of the Board of Equalization. I am pleased to appear before this legislative body today to provide testimony in support of my colleague, Attorney Janalin Cruz Demian, to serve again as a member for the Board of Equalization. I've known Jan for over a decade, as a result of our professional relationship as attorneys with the Guam Bar Association. Jan's legal practices, practice focuses primarily on both commercial and governmental matters, to include lending in financial institutions, acquisitions, corporate governance, registration, licensing and regulatory compliance, real estate, government contracts, procurement regulations. So, she's got a very extensive background in this area of the law and her understanding of these different areas related to what I've just mentioned. Jan is a highly competent, conscientious and diligent individual. She has served with our board for the past term and has provided both instrumental and invaluable service to our board. I am confident that upon her reconformation, she will continue to contribute her vast knowledge, experience, expertise to the Board of Equalization that will truly benefit the best interests of the people of Guam. I am requesting, again, your favorable consideration of Ms. Janalin Cruz Demian to serve as a member of the Board of Equalization. If you have any questions concerning the testimony I've presented today, I'm happy to answer any of those. And so, I would, as the acting director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation indicated, we would certainly ask your support for a swift confirmation. Without her, we would not be able to move forward on some really important issues, and I'm fortunate that she was able to be with us during last month for the review and approval of the tax rule, and that's very critical to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Okube. So, now I'd like to recognize the nominee herself for her testimony.
Thank you, Chair Perez, Chairwoman Perez. Good afternoon, en Hafa Day, senators. As everyone knows, my name is Janalin Demian, and I was appointed to serve on the Board of Equalization by Governor Leon Guerrero, and my appointment was originally confirmed by the 35th Guam Legislature back in 2020, right in the middle of COVID. So, my last testimony was given online, it's my first time appearing in person here. But I accepted Governor Leon Guerrero's request that I continue to serve on the board, and I humbly seek your support of my reappointment. As Chairwoman Perez mentioned, the Board of Equalization serves the important function of certifying the tax rule every year. We just completed that last month. This is important for determination of the government's debt ceiling. The board also reviews taxpayer applications for adjustments to their property tax assessments, and although I personally have not yet had the experience of addressing any taxpayer applications for adjustment, I have approached my work on the board ethically and deliberatively, guided by applicable laws and regulations. I am committed to using my knowledge and experience gained during my 20-plus years as a lawyer as I serve on the board. Keeping my remarks brief, so I'd just like to thank Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Tenorio for their continued confidence in my ability to serve on the board, and thank you again, Madam Chair and senators, for allowing me to provide this testimony, and I ask for your support so I may continue to provide this important public service. Thank you.
This is Ouzmasi, Attorney Demian, for your continued acceptance of this nomination. And, yeah, it seems like your role is really critical to maintaining the function of this board, so we really appreciate that. I did speak with you before, and I just want to maybe reiterate some questions. As far as conflict of interest, do you have any conflict of interest in serving this position?
No, as of right now, I do not. I think that the conflict usually arises when we're going to address maybe individual applications for adjustment, and at that time, as I do in my daily work, we assess who the applicant, or I would assess who the applicant is and see if there's any basis why I cannot sit on or hear their application for adjustment. But that hasn't come up so far during my term.
Okay, so in your packet, you do have, you did list something, you have interest in a following business.
Yes.
Can you explain what that business does?
Sure, yeah, so my husband and I own a jiu-jitsu academy, and that's, yeah, that's that business. It's just a small business right here in Agania, so it doesn't have any business with the Board of Equalization, so doesn't own any real property, but that's a jiu-jitsu academy.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And as far as attendance, how would you rate your attendance on the board meetings?
Perfect, perfect attendance.
Okay, that's what we like to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And as far as like any, of course, appeals, has there been any appeals come before the board?
Nothing since I, well, I take that back. There are appeals pending, I think, when the, no, I haven't been on that long, it's only been since 2020, but I know that when there was the island-wide appraisal done back, I think in 2014, there were thousands of appeals filed by taxpayers seeking adjustments, and I think through the work of the Real Property Division and the leadership of our chairwoman, they were able to really reduce that amount to maybe 30 to 40 that are pending. And so, we just, you know, in our meeting last month, the staff is going through those applications because we really want to get them resolved as soon as possible. A lot of them, and I think most of these, they just didn't complete, submit complete applications that have the supporting documents that would justify an adjustment of their tax. So, the staff is taking care of following up on that, and then we plan to meet on that come in the new year to address those appeals.
Great, and I know we're due for another evaluation, I believe, so...
Yes, and we obviously don't have oversight over that process, but I know in speaking to Deputy Director Lozama, that they're, they're going through that process, obviously, I don't know what, no, there's funding issues and the procurement process that's involved in that, but they have told us that they're working on that now. It is supposed to be every five years or so, yeah.
Okay, and you're not involved in the procurement of that, are you?
No, no.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you again for your acceptance, and we look forward, I look forward to your confirmation.
Thank you.
I do want to open up to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Senator Tadequie, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, and first and foremost, if you got a thumbs up by Okube, you got a thumbs up with me. I've known her forever, and I know she has, she has great high standards for many people, and she surrounds herself with smart people. So, I definitely respect her opinion on it, known her for years, and I'm sure you're doing an excellent job, knowing that you've gone to every meeting, but for the public, a lot of people don't understand what your role is, exactly what you do. So, can you kind of explain exactly what you do in this board?
Sure.
Are you still secretary, right? Are you a secretary still?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I remember you were nominated in 2020, right, as a secretary, and you will still stay on as a secretary, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so, not just the secretary's role, but the board's role, I mean, what they do for the community.
Sure, sure. I mean, everybody who owns property knows about their real property taxes, and when an appraisal is done, the government assesses a tax based on a percentage of the value of the property, and when that's done, it's put in a roll or a list of, you know, property lot numbers with the appraised value and the assessed value and what they have to pay. And so, the Real Property Tax Division and Department of Revenue and Taxation presents that to the board for review and approval, so that then it's issued, and then the... that to the board for review and approval so that then it's issued and then the tax bills can go out based upon the tax rule. And if there are any adjustments that need to be made to the tax value of a property, then taxpayers are able to file appeals requesting like a downward adjustment because, let's say, something wasn't considered properly when the appraisal was done by the government. So those are then presented to us, and we assess whether it's justified and an adjustment needs to be made to the tax rule.
Okay. Is anybody in, that sits on your board that has the expertise for appraisals?
So, no, we do not. And so I haven't yet sat through an appeal, but I believe the appraiser who did the island-wide appraisal that the tax is based upon comes in before the board and justifies the appraised value that was reported to DRT. The taxpayer also typically would bring in, if they're, if they're challenging the value, they would bring in their own appraisal.
Appraisal.
Yeah. And so we would just listen to both sides and figure out whether an adjustment needs to be made. But maybe Chairwoman.
Yes. I can, you know, I, first of all, I totally appreciate Jan. I tell her I love her all the time, except that she went to Notre Dame, so that always bums me out. But other than that, she's been fantastic on our board. So Janet, Ms. Demian came in, Senators, right around the 2020. So as she pointed out in 2014, which was a very unique thing, and I'm glad they did it, and again, it's a result of the lawsuits that have happened prior to that, was to determine what the value of the properties are on Guam. And at that time, the Department of Revenue and Taxation accepted an award and awarded the evaluation of the assessment, appraisal assessment to Cornerstone. So as Attorney Demian pointed out in 2014, we had over 1,000-plus appeals. And so what's happened in that particular situation is, and I believe I've had this discussion with Senator Perez a few years ago, was Cornerstone would evaluate the, make the evaluations of the appraisers, and then they would provide that information to DRT. DRT loads it up and then sends it out to us to determine that these are now the, these are going to be the assessments and that we would like approval for the tax rule. So when there's an appeal that occurs, what we've asked is to please have Cornerstone come in, and at that time, that would be Siska Hopia, to come in and represent the Department of Revenue and Taxation. So in response to your question, Senator Tadegui, nobody per se at the Department of Revenue and Taxation testifies. It would be their representative through the contract. And in my situation, I've been through many appeals. We've resolved a lot of it. And in that particular case, there were some that we needed to resolve. We asked Ms. Hopia to come in. We invited these, those who have satisfactorily provided all the documentation as required under the application process. And she's made her presentation as to why it is that the Department of Revenue and Taxation came up with this number. And typically, in my experience, unless a lot of these applicants have their own appraisers, I've had it before where they've actually brought in appraisers, like Micronesian Appraiser, Siska Hopia, in the past, come in and testify. But in this particular case, if they cannot bring in any kind of justification as to why there should be an adjustment, and the board is satisfied with what Ms. Hopia has presented, oftentimes, we would either deny their application or approve it if there is reasonable justification for, to reduce it. But I recall in my prior years serving on the board, I'm told by board, the board chairs that our goal is really not to try to reduce everything because this really benefits the government, you know? We want to collect the funds that are due to the government of Guam as a result of these tax assessments. So again, as Ms. Demian pointed out, we really look at the applications. I ask the board to, I mean, the DRT to really look at it and determine, are there any technical issues that we need to look at first before it comes to the board? And the people that I've asked to be present would be the appraiser. And it doesn't necessarily mean that the applicant needs to bring in their own, but they need some justification. I give you an example. We had a older gentleman that came in, and he did his research. He did not bring in an appraiser, but he had a landlocked area. He looked at other adjoining properties and said, my appra, my, my tax assessment is higher. And he brought in all the information and showed, this is landlocked, this is landlocked, this is what they did. And as a board, you know, we couldn't not deny him because he was right. He brought in information and the, and DRT said he is correct. So he was able to successfully argue an adjustment just on his own because he really studied the different adjoining properties and their tax assessment, and DRT agreed. It is true. So that's, in that respect, what we do is we really want to heavily rely on the experts that DRT, once they're funded, to bring in and not only do the assessment, but come before the board. Because DRT staff, they're not going to know how to argue this. And as a board, we need to review and be, you know, to make a determination as a board whether or not we should approve the adjustment or not. So I hope that answers his question.
Oh, no. It did more. You provided a lot of information. I, I guess, everybody knows, knows what your office does.
Thank you.
So much for that because many times I get constituents texting, so what do they really do as a board? The only thing else I have to say is that it's important, especially for me, when I want to review the agenda as well as the minutes of the meeting. So either one of you, if you could look at, when you get a chance, update what is posted on the GuamTax.com, you know, dot com, Revantax, because right now I'm only showing, now you meet only once a year, correct? Once a year? Depending?
Yes. Typically, we at least need to meet.
At a minimum, once a year.
Once a year. Okay.
But under the code, I believe there's twice in September, once in October. And so there are other times that we are, should meet, but the real critical part would be the October 30th date, which is when we are presented with the documentation to review and approve the tax rule so that can go out.
So I'm reviewing the agenda and the minutes for 2022. Last one was October 28, 2022. I'm not really seeing the minutes at all on here. They're lacking the minutes. Then you go to the agenda on minutes for 2021. When you open that, it looks like it's missing documents as well. So it's important to make sure that, you know, it's very transparent and that the people of Guam can see exactly what's been going on. And just like that gentleman that you gave an example of doing his own research, this is part of those people who don't want to get an appraiser or an attorney to, you know, they don't have the means. And this is where they can find the information and study how it, so please, can you look into that to make sure it's updated?
Yes.
On the website? And I wish you the very best again, you know, with Kubey's endorsement, you know, I've known her for years. I'm just meeting you. I'm sure you, she, you bring a smile to her face, so that's got to say a whole lot.
Thank you, Senator.
I thank you again so much for stepping up to the plate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Senator Barnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also want to thank my colleague Senator Tadegui for asking you to explain what the Board of Equalization actually does, because if she didn't ask that question, I was going to say, oh, for the viewing public, can you kind of explain what the Board of Equalization does? So thank you for making it a very succinct and easy to understand. And I know you mentioned that you're a co-owner of a jiu-jitsu dojo with your husband?
Yes.
And so I would just ask that you remember the principles of jiu-jitsu. It's a martial art that is heralded because it allows for a smaller opponent to deal with a bigger opponent. And so I would just ask that, in exchange for my vote of support, that you continue to stick up for the little folks.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Senator Canata, do you have any comments or questions for the panel?
No, congratulations. You know, wish you all the best. You're, you're being reapointed, so that means the administration trusts you. And if they trust you, then I'm all in. Ms. Ekubey supporting you, that's good. Having an attorney support you, that means, this, I mean, this is the best time to be supported, right? Other than being in court. You shouldn't have an attorney next to you in any capacity unless you're being indicted or something, right? So this is a good, good time and, yeah, just wishing you the best. My office stands ready to support you if anything.
Thank you, Senator.
All right. Thank you so much for your, your testimony here today, and we look forward to your, your confirmation, hopefully in, soon. So if there are no further testimonies or comments, the nomination for Ms. Janalyn C. Demian has been duly heard.
Thank you.
So thank you so much. The Committee will continue to receive testimony until 4:00 PM Friday, November 17. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or email to office@senatorparas.org. Thank you and have a good day. So we are going to move on to the next item of the agenda. So we are going by themes. This is the DRT segment of our public hearing. We did reach out to Department of Revenue and Taxation. We did receive some notice from the Acting Director, and she basically states that she isn't able to make it unfortunately, but she will provide written testimony prior to the due date. But in any case, we would like to open up the public hearing for the next items on the agenda. The first one is Bill Number 169-37COR, sponsored by Speaker Theresa M. Terlahi, co-sponsored by Senators Sabina Flores Perez, Chris Barnett, Frank Blas Jr., Jesse A. Luhon, William A. Parkinson, Roy A. B. Canata, Talat T. Tadegui. It's an act to amend Section 14101, 14102 and 14103 of Chapter 14, Title 18, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the publication of financial information by nonprofit organizations. I would like to now invite the sponsor of this bill for her opening remarks. Speaker Terlahi, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So Bill Number 169 was introduced at the request of a former Attorney General of Guam in the Civil Division, and this is, he's a member of a nonprofit. So what it's going to do, so currently under Guam law, all nonprofits are, or there are some exceptions, but almost all nonprofits are required to publish annually within 45 days of the close of its fiscal year in a newspaper of general circulation in the territory of Guam, a financial report, which report shall include a statement of income and expenditures for the preceding year and a balance sheet showing its assets and liabilities. And the current statute requires that that ad in the newspaper be no larger than four by five, it need be no larger than four by five. And the financial statement shall contain a certificate as to its accuracy by an officer of the organization, which financial statement shall be filed with the Director of Revenue and Taxation. So what my bill would do is to, instead of requiring these nonprofits to file in a newspaper, it will require them to file, of course, with the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, the same statement. The statement shall contain a certificate as to accuracy by an officer of the organization. And then the Department of Revenue and Taxation will publish that on its website, and the nonprofit will also be required to publish it on its website. So there will still be transparency as to their financial statements, but they will not, some of these nonprofits are quite small, and this will relieve them of the expense of publishing in a newspaper, which is becoming more and more prohibitive as we have fewer and fewer printed newspapers. But I believe that this will continue to promote transparency because they are still required to put it on their website. They are still, Revenue and Tax will be required to put it on its website, and Revantax will have the ability to ensure compliance with this chapter. That's pretty much what the bill will do, and so I ask my colleagues for their support. The person who, I discussed this with, the former civil litigation head at the Attorney General's Office, will be submitting written testimony.
All right. Thank you, Speaker Terlahi. Yeah, and thank you for allowing me to be a cosponsor. It makes a lot of sense in this day and age of electronic IT to have it posted on a website. And definitely, you know, at the cost these days, it can help these smaller nonprofits to be able to comply. So I have no questions at this time, but I want to open it up to my colleagues for any comments or questions. Senator Tadegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I too thank the Speaker for allowing me to be a part of this legislation. I received issues, well, I've received a lot of complaints from individuals who tried to receive funding from, when I was at GBB, for grants being provided to nonprofit organizations. Unfortunately, many of them have never even published their expenditures. They haven't followed the guidelines, but yet they were being given these grants without the information needed to move forward. So I think this is one way that there, there's no excuse not to file it or put it in a paper that it is on the website for everyone to see, and that makes it easier for other agencies that provide grants, like CAHA, GBB, to provide funding for the, for a nonprofit organization, even with any government of Guam agency. So it's as easy as going on the website, looking at Revantax to see if they're in compliance and they're in good standing, and how they're spending their funds is very important. So I greatly appreciate this legislation, and thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Senator Canata?
Hafay, Madam Chair, thank you. Fortunately, we don't have DRT to be present today to comment on this matter, but certainly in the spirit of transparency and digitization, I'm definitely in support. We've seen the significant costs related to printing. So I would just suggest on, to the Committee, if you could please allow for it to be published also on the public notice website. Maybe that, that can also be more easier, easier of access. I mean, even on the DRT website, but also make it a two-pronged approach. Other than that, nothing further.
All right. Thank you, Senator Canata. Senator Barnett?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And I'd like to also commend the author for allowing me to be a cosponsor on the measure as well. I just had a very simple question. Under expenses, because I know that sometimes some of these nonprofits are able to pay their, themselves like a salary, so would that, would that type of information be listed under expenditures? For example, if there's a director, for lack of a better term, of a nonprofit who's receiving a salary from that nonprofit, would that also be publicly noticed?
I can take that, Madam Chair. In the, in the publications of financial reports that I have seen in the newspapers and have done for nonprofits, they're pretty much categorized by category. So it will be personnel and other operating expense categories, but I don't think we're going to see in there particularly what we paid for one individual, not in that report.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. But obviously, I stand in support of the measure, and I'm eager to hear the, or read, actually, the testimony that's provided by DRT. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. All right. So there's, I would like to open the floor to the sponsor. If there's any closing she'd like to make.
Thank you very much. And thank you again to my colleagues for cosponsoring this bill with me and for your support today. I just want to put on the record again why, why this was required in the first place, this publication. And it's, it's required because the findings of previous legislatures were that the people of Guam are generous contributors to charitable or other nonprofit organizations but are usually unaware of the disposition made of their contributions. The purpose is to require organizations to file and publish financial statements so that the people can be made aware of the actual fiscal needs of these organizations and can thus govern themselves and their donations to act to such organizations accordingly. And I, I like that, that's why I read it, because I think it's still applicable today, and it does, it will impact our behavior if we can see some are doing much very well. They don't need our help necessarily, while others might really be struggling to, to help us. So just thank you again to all my colleagues and to you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Speaker Terlahi. Seeing that there's no further testimonies, comments at this time, Bill Number 169-37 has been duly heard, but we will continue to receive written testimony until Friday, November 17. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to And so, now, we are going to move on to the next item of the agenda, which is to get, receive testimony on Bill Number 174-37, sponsored by Senator Roy A. B. Canata, co-sponsored by Senators Joe S. Augustine, Sabina Flores Perez, Speaker Theresa M. Terlahi, Senators Chris Barnett, Duane T. D. Sinikolas, Amanda L. Shelton, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Muny Barnes, Senators William A. Parkinson and Thomas J. Fisher. It's an act to amend Section 3101M1 of Chapter 3, Title 16 Guam Code annotated relative to extending the validity of driver's licenses issued to align with the maximum renewal period allowed under the Real ID Act. And we did receive a fiscal note from BBMR, and which provided some information about the amount collected. So, according to BBMR, driver's license issued, so as part of the Guam Highway Fund during the past four fiscal years, from 2020 to 2023, we received $612,151 in 2020, $704,000 roughly in 2021, 1.1 million in 2022, and $958,000 in 2023. So, this was collected in regards to driver's licenses that I think, I believe were then deposited in the Guam Highway Fund. So, it should be noted that although the above information indicates the total revenues generated from the issuance of driver's licenses by DRT, the figures do not indicate how much of the amount specifically represent driver's license renewals. The extension of driver's license renewals from three to eight years may have the potential to reduce the immediate Guam Highway Fund revenues by prolonging renewal fees by an additional five years. However, absent revenue amounts generated from the driver's license renewals as well as, as common from DRT, whether the passage of the bill would fiscally impact the department's current operations, the Bureau is unable to ascertain the fiscal impact of this proposed legislation. Again, we did send out invites to the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Acting Director Maria Lozama is unable to make it, but she will submit written testimony. So, I would like to now offer the floor to the sponsor of the bill, Senator Canata. You're recognized.
Thank you, Chairperson Perez. As introduced, the Bill 174-37, you already read the title, so I'm not going to go back on that, but it will address the matter of both administrative efficiency and public convenience, the revision of the current driver's license system. As stipulated in the bill before us, the bill proposes to extend the validity of the driver's license issued by Department of Revenue and Taxation from the, from three years to eight years. This period aligns with the maximum renewal period allowed under the federal Real ID Act, and we hope that this synchronization simplifies the renewal process of Guam residents while improving functionality of DRT. I look forward to hearing further testimony from DRT. But again, I, my intention for this legislation was trying to synchronize and streamline government service and to minimize wait lines at DRT because we obviously see even during the pandemic that there's a necessity for the wait lines when we can probably extend the validity of the license and therefore minimize wait, wait times and wait lines at the DRT under the canopy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Canata. Yeah, I think the convenience factors are huge benefit of this bill. You know, I, myself had a, I think, a five-year driver's license, and it's taken forever. So, I think the additional three years might be very helpful as well. But yeah, it'd be definitely important to get more testimony, maybe perhaps there might be issues, you know, if there needs to be any kind of checks, you know, visual checks on the drivers, especially as they age, or perhaps if there's fee, a fee associated with the increase, not to mean that it's going to increase more, the rate's not going to increase more, but just the amount that is paid to pay for those additional years. So, yeah, we're looking forward to the directors, any kind of response. So, at this time, I would like to recognize Senator Tadegui for any comments or questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and you know, when I saw this legislation and thought, okay, what, how much revenue is the government of Guam going to lose out on because of this? Especially, you know, we've given these pay raises, and we've always talked about Revan Tax being able, they're the ones that basically bring the money into the government of Guam, and by staffing that agency, we anticipate to receive more revenue. And in this circumstances, you know, you're, you're lessening the Guam Highway Fund, which does provide some funding to Revan Tax to deal with, with safety issues on the road. I mean, there's a legislation, have any safety precautions been considered in this legislation? So, I decided to look, Madam Chair, at online on some of the other states and, and noticed that some are five years, some are eight years, eight to six years for the general populations. But there is something on the older population. Some states say that after the age of 65, they have to come in every two years. Some have like six years for people 80, okay, this is from Florida. The renewal time is eight years, but for an individual who's over the age of 80, they need to come in every six years. And some of their, you know, states have for an older population every two years that a person over the age of 75 come in, and it clearly states that those who are the older generation are not permitted to renew their license online, that they must come in personally and, and do an eye exam. So, you know, I had a father who drove all the way up to the age of 90 years old, you know, and he was still driving, we had to kind of hide the key after a while, but I, and I don't think he would have passed his next exam the next time he went to drive. So, it would have probably been a whole lot easier to have Revan Tax tell my father that he cannot drive anymore than his children. Parents don't, you know, always listen to their kids, but they sure do listen to the law, and they, they do listen to an agency that says, oh, I'm sorry, I can't renew your license. Makes it easier. So, I think we need to find some precautions in this legislation, and, and, you know, the Real ID Act is no way to regulate the safety of our streets, you know, to base it on the, the Real ID Act. So, I think we need to look at other jurisdictions, which all of them have these concerns and all incorporated the consideration of the older generation, 70 years old, 80 years old, there's one at 65 years old. You know, as we get older, we tend to slow down a bit, our reactions to things are much slower. So, we have to look at the safety and well-being of our, our community and definitely our streets. So, I'm hoping, Madam Chair, you would, or the author of this legislation, will look at these other jurisdictions where they have these certain restrictions for the older generation. It doesn't stop them from getting it, you know, don't get me wrong, from getting renewed, they just have to make sure they take these eye exams and make sure that they can still operate a vehicle. So, other than that, I'm looking forward to hearing from Revan Tax on how much funding this will take away from their agency to provide enforcement, to provide the needs of Revan Tax. And if there is a substantial amount, then I think we should recognize how we're going to subsidize it. So, other than that, Madam Chair, I thank you for the opportunity.
Right, it's Doos Massey, Senator Tadegui. Speaker Terlahi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the sponsor of the bill. It's a good bill. So, currently, we're requiring renewals every three years for all driver's licenses, but this would require it every eight years. And I just wanted to ask, we have two categories of driver's licenses now, right? The Real ID ones and the regular ones. But this bill would amend it for all kinds. Yeah. All right, that's one question. The other one was the fees. I think if we're going to renew them less, then their fee should be higher, and I think that's what we did when we allowed for a longer period for, actually, the elderly driver's licenses. We, we, they pay more in advance for a longer term of a driver's license. But, and I appreciate the concerns that were raised regarding vision checks. Thank you, thank you. I support the bill.
Thank you, Speaker Terlahi. Senator Barnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it is a good bill, and I thank the author for allowing me to be a co-sponsor on it. Eight years, it's a long time. You know, I actually forgot to renew my driver's license one year, for a whole year, and then I had to go and take the written test all over again. So, yeah, just be mindful of that if we, if we pass this, you know, just be mindful that, of that eight-year period, because let me tell you, there's a lot of things on that written test that, you know, muscle memory when you're driving the car, but when you see it in black and white written in front of you, it's a little bit of a challenge. And I would also like to see, and maybe this is something we could do in committee or on the floor, specific to the Madam Co., like a discounted rate or something, right? Thank, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. So, I'd like to open the floor for the sponsor of the bill for any closing at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In conclusion, I hear the reservations posted earlier. We'll definitely look into that. I do know that the elderly population, of course, has direct flight to go to the front of the line, so possibly that can be an avenue we can take. But again, we'll deal with that in the committee after we hear from DRT what the recommendations are for this proposed legislation. In conclusion, this proposed act aims to be a meaningful improvement to our current system and alignment brings us to, in line with federal Real ID guidelines by extending the validity of these, by extending the validity period of driver's licenses and also to the, whether it be a Real ID or, it's not a fake ID, but the regular Guam ID, and expect the benefits to our residents in terms of efficiency and convenience, as well as for the Department of Revenue and Taxation in terms of improved operations. I want to thank the committee for hearing this bill and to those who came out to testify and look for, look forward to further testimony again. Kudos and thanks to my colleagues who joined me as a co-sponsor in this legislation. And that, nothing further, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Canata. So, if there are no further testimonies, Bill Number 174-37COR has been duly heard. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Friday, November 17. Please address all testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation. Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning can be dropped off the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. The committee will now adjourn. The time is 4:26 PM. Doos Massey.